And the drainage rodeo was from 2:00 to 4:00, and I would like to personally thank all the folks that came out and participated in both the transportation and the drainage rodeo. It was a come and go, and we had a pretty good steady stream. I haven't seen the sign-in sheet numbers, and I don't think everybody signed in. It may not be an accurate representation, anyway. But with that, City Manager, I'm turning it over to you.
Mayor and Council, we are going to spend the first part of the meeting discussing the feedback that we got today from the transportation portion of our meeting. That's going to be led by Tom Grant with Kim Lee Horn and supported by Matt. So that's where we'll kick off, and we'll stay focused there before we move to item two. So, gentlemen?
Thank you, Linda. First, I wanted to thank the Council for this opportunity. This has been a wonderful journey we're going on, and now we are landing these standards where the rubber hits the road and applying this to real-world standards. Today, we gathered quite a bit of input from the citizenry, from the developers, the developer engineers, from residents of the community, and it was extremely helpful to inform this process. And so what we'll do is we're going to go through just a brief summary. There should have been another presentation there. We have the feedback that we received and some of the comments that we heard, but I would like to introduce the Council to Tom Grant. He is a transportation engineer with Kim Lee Horn, who has been helping us lead this effort, and will be processing the thoroughfare master plan update.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Council.
Thank you, Matt. There we go. Good evening, everyone. We had a really productive afternoon, and this is going to be a recap of what you saw a couple of weeks ago that was introducing the project. Now we are diving in and going to be laying out the whole transportation grid over the next month and a half. This is just a really quick portion from mine. What, Matt, could you ... It's frozen. Hold on. The quick background, y'all saw the slides last time, but with the new development code, it's going to have a required street grid as part of it. And because of that, we need to update the thoroughfare plan map. And one of the big changes with that map as well, when we start thinking about this, is more of a multimodal map from now on. So sometimes those streets could be trails instead. So if there are areas, we're trying to limit having dead ends anymore, so as you come to a constraint, maybe the river, you would be able to tie in, and you might have a trail, for instance. So it's not just focused on the streets anymore, but we really are trying to have this connected grid from now on. I'll let Matt talk more on the code portions later, but with the thoroughfare plan map, looking at those constraints, development feasibility, improved walkability, just this continued grid of streets with sidewalks and short block links, and by doing this mandatory street system, you're going to have a better walkable network throughout. And so it's not discontinuous like a lot of it is right now. With the data collection, we are in the middle of this process right now. So we were here all day yesterday, did a several-hour tour with city staff to see the bones of what the infrastructure is and how the city is and all the different topography that you have. You've got some amazing views in here, but those are also constraints of how you'd actually build your roads through certain areas. And we're very sensitive to, on the east side, where you've got the Houston Toad Habitat and the State Park, that there'll be areas that you're not going to have that more intense grid network, but more on the western side of Bastrop within the statutory one mile. We will be coding and layering it all out.
While Tom has brought that up, I want to talk of intricacies that that brings up. We had a fabulous conversation last night about pervious versus impervious cover, and absolutely delighted at your generosity to use pervious cover-type applications. And so in a road network like Tom's talking about, we're going to get into, that would be where we would do cluster development in a village concept. So you're going to have to build a street to get your fire apparatus in and out that will be the fire lane. But what feeds off of that will be part of your grid network that may or may not be built to handle a fire standard, a fire piece of equipment. So in that particular area, not only will we be dealing with the transportation aspect of it, but we'll be dealing with the buildability of it. And I know that's not a word, but you know what I'm trying to say, because what we are going to have to do in those areas to meet the geographically sensitive issue is figure out what is the issue and how the code then is impacted. So in that particular area, I anticipate that you'll come up to a wall, if you will, and then you'll see loops and lollipops that won't be the traditional loops and lollipops of a cul-de-sac, but you would see something that would be built to be the fire lane so we can meet the life safety aspect of your commitment, but yet will be different, even more different than what we're used to when we push the code. So those are areas that Matt and Tom got in the truck yesterday with the consultant, and they spent time having some real aha moments, because we all know, not only is the Lost Pines area complicated from the topography, I'm sorry, from the Toads, but from the drainage aspects as well. So those will be areas where we will have to dial down and deal with that subject in a holistic context, because one of the things y'all have challenged us with is not to do something that makes sense on paper from a thoroughfare standpoint and then have the fire chief say, "No, we can't do it because we can't get the fire truck in." So those are areas when we talk about the geographically sensitive aspects we're going to be noting, and those will be things that will be referenced in the character districts that are not only going to be buildable questions from a place type, but there'll be eye code in a transportation issue. And I'm making the effort to make the point that when we get to those kinds of things, our ability to solve those is what makes this authentic Bastrop. So what we're doing is not trying to say, "Oh, well, you can't build up there because it's the Toad Habitat," and that's our reaction to it. Our consultants have found that to be some of the most opportunities, because it's truly unique, and because we are willing and able and now have a mechanism to get out of our box, that's going to allow us to see that in a different way. So those are the areas where they will be spending the most time, because the grid network, in 90% to 95% of the places, it's just going to be the grid network, but it's that 5% to 10% that's going to make this authentic and will make it developer-friendly, but yet preserve what makes us Bastrop, because we're not going to act like it doesn't exist. We're going to have to figure out how to make it work.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit, one of the things that really is going on is truly studying where tree canopies are, where there's steep slopes, or where there's flat portions where the grid lays out nicely, or also where there's opportunities for colliding grids to come together where it creates real visual interest so that the development potential can utilize the natural features as highlights rather than obstacles. And so we're really trying to lay that out so that it creates visual interest in the long-term build-out of the community for the future network of roads and streets.
Okay, thank you. So this is your existing thoroughfare plan map that we will be changing, and we're going through all the different pieces that we were talking about, going through these cross-sections that Matt's going to elaborate on later on tonight, but tying how we're going to tie that in and what that required road network will be and where it's going to be laid out with that grid network. And with that, we're going to update that Chapter 5, the senior thoroughfare plan. So the rest of the thoroughfare plan, we're not changing right now, but we are diving in, as I was saying, with the thoroughfare plan map. This is going to be more of a multimodal mobility map as well. So what did we hear today? We had a really good turnout from the public that was coming. A number of development community and residents and realtors were here just wanting to see what was going on. Everything that I heard, for the most part, was people were excited about what this plan is and how it's going to work was more some of the questions that people had. So one of them was more, if I build on this parcel out here, what do I do where it ties in? And that's the type of detail that we'll get into with the code, that you would have, you'd build the thoroughfare plan road to your tie-in line, and then someone else is going to come in later. Details will be worked out on if some of these are city projects or if it's a developer project. 71, I heard someone was talking about that as far as, like, that is your choke point. I know you're well aware of that, that if you have an accident, you can't get by right now, but needing to have facilities on either side of 71 that would, and that resident was saying, more of a major-type roadway. The most of our grid network we're going to have is pretty small, the 55 and 1/2-foot right-of-ways, but you will have some roads that will be a little bit larger that might carry a little bit more traffic. The concern that people had of limited connectivity within some of the subdivisions today, that you sort of go to dead ends, and just to get out of the development, you have to weave through four or five different streets to get out. And so they were very appreciative of the idea of the grid network that's more continuous, and it also reduces choke points on your traffic, and you've got alternate routes you can go, and you're not going out of your way to go different places. Our next steps are really laying out this plan. We have a couple of pictures that I didn't see them pop up. I guess just down at the bottom, you can see, we're starting to lay out conceptually what some of those grid would look like. We'll dive in more detailed with the existing thoroughfare map and subdivisions that are already plotted and other constraints related to the rail and the river and the streams and different things that we're going to, all pile that together for a draft that we'll have on May 24th, and so people will be able to see that and respond to it and look at it.
And the network of streets that are being proposed in these grid standards are based off of what the Iredale map and what the town was set up on. It was, we do have some slides to articulate how this breaks down. It's 771 feet with the public right-of-way included. It's about 720 feet with the public right-of-way excluded, and that 720 feet or 700, almost 20 feet, it's .5, because all the right-of-ways done in 55.5. But essentially, the same patterns that are prevalent in downtown, the foundation of the community, is what's being utilized to create this new network. And so it's not creating something new, it's elaborating on what you already have in your existing town and growing that opportunity.
One of the things that was interesting, and I had an opportunity to visit with a couple of people, is they had a, and I don't know what y'all call it, it was something that had the grid laid out so you could find your piece of property and put the grid on top of it to see how that would work. And I found that that was a real aha moment, particularly for one person that I was talking to, because they saw that where it was flat, that worked, but they also recognized that they had some topography challenges where that grid network wouldn't. And they said, "You know we're going to have to do a cluster development. Oh, yeah, and we have a place type for that." So I went over there and did that, and they were stunned that, "You anticipated that?" Well, yeah, that's the whole point of what we're trying to do. So there were some real aha moments about, and this particular person had been at the design and the code rodeos and had understood conceptually, but when you really begin to put it on a map and see the level of care that we're going through to meet the intent of the purpose statement, it was profoundly powerful to them, because their comment was, "Most cities would prevent us from doing it right." And so we are delighted that we're able to sit down and be able to acknowledge that, and you're going to make that easy. And I said, "Yeah, because we're going to give you flexibility in not only the street network, but embracing the environment and the flexibility on the residential side." So this exercise of having the maps and then being able to look at it and really begin to envision what that might look like for them today, I thought was powerful, and I thought we had some good conversation because of it.
That was good on that part. I'll turn it over to Matt.
Does the Council have any questions regarding the transportation or drainage rodeo at this point?
So when you deliver that draft on the 24th, is it also going to be looking at some of these subdivisions that you said were excited about maybe creating some connectivity for them, or are you going to also be doing some work on that? Is that part of this?
That's a good question as far as the existing subdivision. So anything that's plotted, we are leaving alone, but I think we will be looking at any connectivity that we can have to those, if possible. But anything that's already plotted, we're not redrawing what they've built or what's already approved.
What she's specifically talking about, I think, is like a Riverside Grove where people are wanting to know, "How's it going to be connected to 969? How's that grid going to match in?" There's commercial in front of it, because, as you mentioned, 71 is a choke point, and with Seaton and Agnes being built, there's hope for the folks who live in Hunter's Crossing, but there's folks in Riverside Grove going, "Hey, we still have to use 71 frontage," and the intersection there at Burleson Crossing is, I believe the technical term, a nightmare. So they're wanting to know when they're going to get relief on that side of 71. That's, I believe that's what she's...
That would definitely be correct.
That level of detail will be, that will be presented.
There are going to also be opportunities for those kinds of questions to be addressed where decisions in the past have been made to not punch through. And what has happened now is you are going to have some areas that are isolated from a transportation perspective that would make the property work and be valuable. So what we'll be bringing to your lines on the map, so that when the development in its current format changes and gets redeveloped, there's an opportunity to require the dedication. So perhaps the reason that it didn't punch through is the people that currently live there didn't want it, or we were concerned about the development that maybe didn't arrive. So we're not advocating that we're going to change it today, but sometime in the future, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years from now, when that happens, that line on the map gives us the authority as staff to work with that developer at that point in time to give that much-needed connectivity today that doesn't have it. So when we bring this back and we get at the granular lever level, we will have a list of those items for y'all to decide, yes, we want to go ahead and put the line on the map and get it at one point, or no, we're not going to touch that, we're going to leave it alone. But those are going to be the things, Mayor, that will help with perhaps a new generation of folks that now want the connectivity, that would appreciate it when it's not as obvious as it is in Riverside Grove. And that will be happening in May. That's part of the process that, once the codes get turned over and we start going through the public process, P&amp;Z will wrestle with that, Council will have to wrestle with that, and I hate to reduce it to a line on the map, but that's what it will be, but that line is important, because when they come in, that's what gives us the regulatory authority with the developer to say, "Yes, you have to put the road in, or no, you don't."
So when you bring that in May, what's going to happen is, not only are we going to look at that and see what it looks like, but we're going to start prioritizing, and if that's the case, are you going to have a list of, "Well, we think we should do this first," or, you know?
Well, in most instances, it will be development-driven. Now, if there is a situation where right-of-way exists, and I don't know that there's right-of-way outside of Riverside Grove for that connectivity, so unless it's voluntarily donated to get on a CIP, it would be condemnation, and at this point in time, y'all have not had any interest in that, so it would be development-driven. So when the adjoining property comes in to be developed, that's when that connectivity would occur. None that I have kind of in my mental list that I know politically we're going to point out and make sure we're all on the same page would be necessarily things that we could do because it's on private property, but it does become important connectivity for that grid in the next 50 to 100 years.
We're experiencing that kind of thing with Agnes, aren't we? Basically, I mean, it's evolved.
Agnes is a great example, Councilmember, where we started out seeing Agnes as just a connection point, but in one of the street designs that they'll show you tonight, it really lends itself to be a boulevard. Well, we had no ability to dream in the context of a boulevard, because we didn't have that street design, but now that we do, I can envision how that's really going to set the tone for the whole Meadows character district, because now Agnes can be something more than a connection between three or four and Childers. It becomes that boulevard that begins to provide a sense of place and how the buildings will align to it. So Agnes solves the connectivity question because the property is ready to be developed. Agnes gets solved because we've got the property owners that have come to the table and been willing to dedicate the right-of-way. Agnes is going to come to fruition because BEDC has hired a surveyor to plot the actual, thank you, how the road will actually be built, and we've got grant funding lined up that we're cautiously optimistic we're going to land. So Agnes will happen because the star's lined up. We need that to happen on the north side. Hopefully, with these codes, we'll see some of that same activity, and all of that just literally since January has kind of come to fruition and been possible. Hopefully, this whole exercise will help that on the north side, and we'll see that as well.
So with that, we will now begin to get into the actual code standard. Colin, we may have to stick back to the other presentation. While he's doing that, I would like to real quickly say that the way that we have drafted this code was to aspire to accomplish the long-term goals of the comprehensive master plan, to utilize the public input that we had gathered throughout these processes. And what your community often said is they wanted less regulation and they wanted more opportunity, more building types, more standards that matched the measurements that they were trying to see. And what we believe that we've done is we have loosened up regulations and really landed the standards of metrics for the regulatory framework to achieve limited regulations, but only regulate the key functions which create the quality places that the community has been aspiring to accomplish. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the code, and we're going to first go through the outline of the code. This is the process, the flow, the general provisions and how this flows. Then we will do a deep dive into the individual sections of the code. Then we will work on generating specific character district regulations, and we'll go through the character districts and what those are and how they relate. And then furthermore, we'll go into the place types. The place types are all created off of existing characteristics which you have in Bastrop. We extracted the code, the DNA of the downtown and these areas that you already have, and turned them into place types for how to build into the future. Next, we will review the street section, and we'll also demonstrate how all of these standards tie together to create an overall built environment. We are not working on focus for building subdivisions, but rather building neighborhoods, and neighborhoods that build community. And when all of these pieces come together, you get the quality of place that you have in the downtown Bastrop area, and what we'd like to do is emphasize why these key characteristics are important as we go through this. So the first page you'll see is the general provisions with the outline, so it starts at the general provisions, follows into the process. We felt like it was good to get the legalese language, that's all your if, or the here, you know, hereas, whereas, with herein, we designate this and the legal language. Next will be the process, how you flow through the code, the sequential steps of the code. Then we will go through place types, character districts, the public realm and private realm, which we are going to get more into detail on the 23rd. Because of the information that we received today and over the last few days, we're writing those standards to input the feedback that we heard from the community. And then lastly, the pattern book, which would be Section 7. So Section 1, General Provisions, legal language and authority. It covers the purpose and intent, and we'll go over those in just a second. Rules of construction and how non-conforming uses and structures would be deemed within the code. The purpose of the V3 code is to provide a set of development regulations that permit the creation of geographically sensitive and physically sustainable cities. The V3 regulations are based on the physical form with the emphasis of the relationship between the property to the public realm. This is a critical piece that we believe that has ultimately solved not having to get down into the individual land use elements. There is not going to be a land use metrics within your code. This is a very forward-thinking way of handling development. Furthermore, we're letting the International Code Council, the ICC Code, regulate the public health, safety, welfare aspects as to how the buildings work, how the fire ratings work within the buildings. So the International Fire Code, the International Electric Code, International Property Maintenance Code would be governing the health, safety, welfare aspects with regards to the building types.
So, like, that's huge, that statement that you just made. It's very all-encompassing, and it makes two questions come to mind right away that are really more towards Allen than you. The part towards you is, I totally understand the land uses and good grief, some of, we've been, we talked about the blockbusters thing, you can come up and talk about land uses now that five years from now don't exist, and there'll be uses five years from now that we don't know and wouldn't know how to write down them now, anyway. So I'm fine with that, and I totally get that, although that's a huge change, this really. What about sexually-oriented businesses and alcohol sales and things that I thought we would have legal requirements regardless of what our zoning has? I feel like that's the elephant in the room, and if it's the wrong time to talk about it, shut me down.
Regarding alcohol sales, so much of that is regulated by the TABC. They are the first and primary regulator of where those establishments can go. We have some limited authority in terms of parsing out residential versus non, but that's about it. And so we may need to dive in deeper on that topic when the time comes.
So we are, and maybe, again, cut me off if I'm jumping in the wrong place, but there will, like, right now, we call it a conditional use permit. It may have a different name, but I would think there's still some hoops and checks and notifications and things that we would have to do.
It's the same functionality of what we have now.
What I would say to you is this, as we go through this, if there are some things that are absolutely not, like, you don't want a rendering plant in the middle of downtown, okay? There's nothing wrong with us putting uses that aren't allowed without coming to Council. And that's probably an important statement that needs to be made here. Everything that you will adopt ultimately is going to be allowed because you've given it the authority to be allowed. Now, that doesn't mean if somebody brings us something that isn't in this code, it's not allowed. It just means staff won't process it outright. That means it's got to go to PNC and be vetted. It's got to look in the context of where it is and all of the things relative to this, and then it's got to come to Council and get a special disposition to approve that. So if there are some things that we already know we're just not going to do, let's put them in there, find a place for them unless there's a law that says we can't, and just save people the trip. And that will give, I think, some of our citizens some comfort that they don't have to wake up one morning and find this next door to them. So we can certainly do that. Sexually-oriented businesses, I cut you off before you answer that, but I also know that has its own issue, as do mobile homes and a few other things that lobbyists have gotten the state to say they get treated differently, so you might address those.
That's true. You know, sexually-oriented business or adult entertainment facility, whatever term you use, is kind of a broad umbrella, and the courts have told us we can't treat them all the same. A bookstore is different than a video store, is different than a live dancing studio. But either one you choose, they have a constitutional right to exist somewhere, and you can't ban them from everywhere. And so the state of the art is not necessarily dictating where they go physically, it's regulating them to the extent that they may choose just to be somewhere else. And so, you know, toward the end of this process, we will be updating and expanding our registration and licensing requirements for those types of businesses.
I just wanted, when I hear we're not going to be having land use, it means I have absolutely no knowledge of what's going to be being built next door to me. I'm just trying to anticipate some questions that I would get.
No, and I think they're very important, because part of what we want to do... No, and I think they're very important because part of what we want to do is for the things that we're okay with, we need to make it easy to have them. For the things that we don't, there needs to be a process. And to Alan's point, there may be some areas where you're not happy that we have them and we have to put them somewhere, so this is the lesser of the evils as to where they go. And so, there will be some of those conversations. What I would ask is that we, you neither tell us publicly or offline, and we'll keep a running tab of that, but let's have these conversations from the perspective of what we want there, knowing then that there will come a time that we've gotten this all laid out, we are comfortable with what these character districts are. Staff has now spent enough time with them, they have a personality, you know, they have a character about them. So, y'all will get comfortable as y'all set policy with them and there'll be some places that you'll just go, "Oh, no, we're not." Yeah, this one hadn't developed yet, so we can make allowances for it and everybody that moves into that area would know upfront, it's a possibility. So, those would be things that let's deal with after the fact as the asterix and not worry about them and make decisions trying to make that square peg going a round hole. Let's get the round hole with the round hole stuff and then we'll just make that list and that'll be kind of our final thing is we bring closure to this, where can those things be allowed?
So, my comment, and that was a very, I'm glad the mayor brought that up, but sometimes I think the public doesn't realize they don't want it until, oh my God, they're building it and I didn't think about not saying I didn't want these things. So, I think it's a great time for the public to think about things they might not want because you didn't know you didn't want it until they built it and then it's too late. So, maybe for the public to think about things.
So, here's what I would say, because part of my role in all of this is to look for everything that gives this code process political cover. And anything that could potentially derail it like that, we need to address upfront. So, my suggestion is, is that we're going to get a use chart and we're going to send it to you. And everything you got a question about, I want you to highlight and then make a note to me as to why it's a problem for you. Because it's possible that we could mitigate your problem through nuisance, which Alan, I mean, James is going to bring you on the 23rd, but we can't mitigate it if we don't know it. There could be some things that we flat can't mitigate. Okay, well, we need to have a bold conversation about, you know what, it's authentic Bastrop and Rich is not going to have that. Okay, that's a policy choice. We need to have a conversation about it and we need to understand why that's the case so that if those circumstances change, technology changes, whatever it is, it becomes something that we can manage appropriately for the right reason. But we'll get that list to you because I think those are very important questions that when the time comes, we need to have a conversation about it and make sure we dotted every i and every t. Because in some instances, council member, the answer is, "I'm sorry, you don't want that next door, but tell me how it's negatively impacting you." And we need to be sure that we've gotten it to that point so they can just not like it, but they don't have a real good reason for not liking it other than they just don't like it. That's okay. What I don't want is we should have thought, should have anticipated and did not. That's not okay.
And furthermore, when we do get into the place types, you'll start to see intensities, intensity of development of whether it's nature, T1, or you know, P1 and then it goes into like rural environments and then residential is P3. And so, there's a build of intensities. So, when we say there's no land uses, it doesn't mean that you can put land uses everywhere. There's appropriate places for particular land uses based on intensity and based on building types. And so, this is a different way of doing city building. It's going back to the roots of the way that we built cities. Bastrop was essentially built using these parameters. We're going back to that and I think once we get into the building types and how they apply to the place types and where they fit into the character districts, the areas where you're trying to really create a sense of place and a sense of identity, we'll really be able to refine those standards to ensure that the applicable buildings and the applicable intensities happen in the right locations. Third is the proper structure and organization of the elements of this code are critical for the creation of walkable, connected and distinct communities. This is the, again, going to the purpose of the document. One of the other clear policy directions we receive from the council is fiscal sustainability and we believe that this will be accomplished through protection of the environment, conservation of land to prevent habitat degradation and erosion and flooding, which is an issue, conservation of energy and natural resources, reduction of vehicular traffic congestion with well-connected networks of streets which provides public safety during major events, more efficient use of public funds and public infrastructure, I should say that as well, and public benefits of a walkable environment. Historic preservation of its rich and cultural assets and to facilitate the adequate availability of transportation, police, fire protection, water, sewers and all of the other public facilities that go along with that. And reduction of suburban sprawl development and improving of the built environment. The intent of the code is to create fiscal sustainability, a timeless community through community-led land use regulations that are locally made, authentic Bastrop and geographically sensitive. That is the policy statement that was given to us by the city council and leads the intent of the organization of this code.
That's not the updated, we don't have parentheses and all, so, and I know y'all will, but I'm just saying, that's not the one.
Okay, we will update that. Thank you, mayor. To allow for land use regulations and development patterns to ensure appropriate settlements, adaptation and reuse of land and buildings within the city of Bastrop. We really focused on allowing for the evolution of buildings to take place. And these buildings have been down here 187 years now and have been evolving, yet they're in the same physical form, same with, so we wanted to ensure that that still is allowed within this. To implement the existing Bastrop goals and policies and principles of the 2036 comprehensive plan and to implement the existing and amended city of Bastrop goals, policies and principles of the 2017 transportation master plan and to build neighborhoods, not subdivisions. So, with that intent, we will now go into the process of how this flows. And so, we'll review the standards for development, location and see what is developable. That gets broken down in section three through six where the actual applications of the development take place. Development applications, basically a three-step process. So, first, what would happen on a large site is you would have a regulating plan. Step two would be a public frontage plan and flats. This is how the buildings in your built form interact with the streets. This is the most critical piece and where majority of the regulatory framework is house, is how the buildings relate to the streets. So, it would require public frontage plans and flats, which we'll get into in just a minute here. And then you have the private development standards. What we've done is we've separated out the public realm from the private realm. And this is really critical because it allows for the development community to understand where the public infrastructure is housed, how it fits, how it works, and then they have clear regulations about their own lot standards. And so, we've broken that into layers that make it very easy for development to have predictable and flexible standards. Third, you'll have your administrative review, administrative adjustments and exemptions and special exceptions. Mayor, you mentioned earlier that you use conditional use permits. What we were proposing is special exceptions since they would be all-encompassing and not just land use based, but special exceptions would allow for items to come to council that don't meet the intent of the code. It would have very clearly defined processes for how those special exceptions would be managed. So, going into, oh, yes, ma'am, did you have a question?
So, when you talk about step one, regulating plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just talk about that a little? Oh, hold on.
So, step one is the regulating plan. And a regulating plan will be the governing document of how development happens into the future. So, if a developer comes to town, they would submit a regulating plan. These would be based off of 80 acres or 160 acre sites, which would be what would be called a pedestrian shed. It's a walkable area. If they have a thousand acre development, they may have five or six pedestrian sheds within that, which would be five or six little regulating plans fitting together. It would include a legal description and a geographic map. They would have to establish the thoroughfare network, which would be a review of the existing thoroughfare transportation master plan, and they would assign thoroughfare types. And so, you'll see the, the, let me see, I have a bit more. This area here, the second image, shows the hierarchical network of streets and how they would relate to the buildings. Third, you would assign place types, civic space and open space, and we will get into more of these details and the terms and we're going to unfold and dive into this shortly. Yes, sir.
Sheds?
Yes, sir. So, a pedestrian shed is like a watershed. Water will shed off into one area and it reaches a certain point before it fully penetrates into the soil. People will walk a certain distance before they will call it quits. And so, the intent is, based on a walkable environment, we did an analysis of your downtown area and came up with your pedestrian shed based off of place type distribution. I apologize, this is super technical. I don't know how to make it less technical. Let me think of how to do this less technical.
That's right, you probably did it.
And so, essentially what we say is that people will walk a certain distance. In the United States, it's about a quarter of a mile. And if you could put daily services within that walkable distance, within a walkable environment, people will choose to do that. And so, the things that we heard throughout the code rodeo and the design rodeos was the opportunity for walkable places. Well, in order to get that, you must require it. And what we've done is we've come up with a place type distribution that would be required for each plan area. And so, you would have nature integrated with farms next to houses, next to shop fronts and you have it in the downtown.
Council member, this would allow a Tracy's to be built in North Bastrop. Let me just put it on the ground level.
I agree.
That's exactly what this is anticipating.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you. So, next, they would have to explain their blocks and the block dimensions of how they would like to break those down. Then they would assign lots. They would do a geographic sensitivity survey, explain flood plain, topo, tree survey. And the last thing would be the grading and drainage plan. This will be housed on the front end so that the drainage is not handled at the time of preliminary plat when all of the drawings have been done, where the development is laid out. And if they did not meet the intent of that, instead of having to go back to the drawing board, it would be handled on the front end.
This is, in my opinion, one of the really most significant components of, without getting into specifics of existing development, we haven't done a good job of this. What we've done is, say they might own 100 acres, but they only want to develop 20 of it. So, all they bring us is 20. Then when they get to, ready to develop the next 20, they bring us the next 20 when what they should have brought us is the whole 100 and laid out a master plan for the 100 so we could dare to dream and anticipate what might happen in the future and plan for that. But we get it in increments of what will the market develop today. And so, the great thing about this regulating plan is we get to anticipate when that development builds out, what does that allow the next development to build because it's there. A great case in point is unless you've got a lot of residential density, you're not likely to get business because they need the residents to support it. Well, you never get the businesses if you don't anticipate that that's phase two because phase one now gives you the density that you need for the business. And if you do it in 20 acre increments and all they are are single-family home builder developers, all you're going to get is single-family development. So, this allows us to fix that. The other challenge that we've got when we develop in 50 lot parcels is we deal with drainage in 50 lot parcels. And then the next 50 lot parcel gets built and maybe it connects well or maybe it doesn't. And when you get to the end, if you had master planned all of it, you might have made a different drainage decision before, now you've run out of runway and you've got to do some things to fix it, which we're having to do. So, as y'all have challenged us to ensure detrimental development doesn't occur on our watch, we've had to change the way we view the information we get from the development community. And we all agree, because we had a very lengthy conversation that Alan participated in relative to the importance of this step. This is where all of our issues that we're dealing with today that become the bat from which we get beat, had we done this, we wouldn't be doing that. So, as I have said to staff, the development community's not going to like this because they're going to have to spend more money upfront. My comment to that is they're actually going to save money because they're going to spend smart money right, get it right and spend less money than having to fix it in the five or six piecemeals and it will actually work. And then we'll get something that we can maintain, that our neighbors will like and it'll function well. So, this is an educational opportunity, but this is where I would say to you, the things that frustrate you that we end up dealing with is because we didn't have this process.
Linda, do you want to talk about that we've had the conversation about prior to the regulating plan and spending that real money, something that we learned from the moratorium process, doing the onsite visit and being a part of the first part of the process?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, before this, so this is real money like Linda was talking about, okay? So, we've had conversations of those site visits that we've done through the moratorium process with building Bastrop have been extremely helpful and how helpful it would be to continue that as a part of our regular development process. So, when the applicant comes in, we'll go meet with them on the site. We'll walk the site. We'll say, "Gosh, look at this topography here. Before you lay out, you know, this lot plan here, think about how that'll integrate." Or, "Look at this great bunch of oak trees or lobwali pines that you could save if you navigated this way." So, it really starts to inform that development pattern prior to them going and spending a lot of money with an engineer and then coming to us with a plan and we're like, "Well, this won't work." And then that's where the rub is, right? Because they've already spent real dollars. And so, having us involved in the front end of that process and working as a partner with them, instead of just a check-in-the-box exercise when they bring us their plans, we think will be extremely helpful and we'll build that in.
So, Matt, why don't you talk about, there's a concept plan as well, isn't there? Is the concept plan before the regulating plan?
Are you talking about last night?
I was talking about what I heard people talking about this afternoon.
So, the concept plan would be just that. It's after our site development plan, they would then come and say, "Okay, we talked about this and at the site visit, we think this is where we're going." And it's really a concept level, nothing more, but staff could be like, "Yes, this is what we discussed, tweak this, look at these opportunities, you know, maybe make some adjustments to that." And once they get this conceptual plan, then they can go to the regulating plan.
And is there, so the site visit is before the concept plan, the concept plan's before the regulating plan?
That's correct.
Does staff do all, the council has seen nothing yet?
You won't see it.
You will not see, but...
I'm just wanting, because if I'm a developer, it's like, "I'm trusting you down this road and I don't want to be six months into this and find out that rotten mayor said no and now I'm screwed." And I know that's not a technical term, but...
So, that rotten mayor won't say no because you've already said yes.
Okay. I just, I want us to be clear that it's, so legally, we have no more flats to approve?
We'll get a plat, but that's step two.
Yeah, we're not quite...
All right. But this, we're calling this step one, but that is, that's a lot of money. There's something before step one, right? There's a site visit, there's a concept plan. That's what was throwing me off. This is an awful lot of money to spend at step one when you don't know if it's going to fly or not.
The, but the hope is that this is the measure twice, cut once method. Measure twice, cut once. And so, what you do is you're ensuring that the site walk and the concept plat plan would actually ensure that you're building to code standards. The regulating plan is going to allow them to ensure that they're hitting all of the standards before they get to, through any development process.
Why are you calling it step one?
We are doing it for simple purposes tonight. It's in a bucket.
But there is, or this could be step three or this could be step one.
Step one, the regulating plan, there's a preemptive strike before you make the strike. We're just simplifying it for purposes of discussion.
Maybe this is step one submittal. This is what their first submission to the city level would be. The other ones are... The other ones are staff, it's a staff process. It's not necessarily within this process. It's going to walk and going to get the...
I would say to you, that is a great way to look at it. Before you get to the submittal, we need to have talked about it, drawn it out on paper, made sure we're communicating, made sure that the block types match the street types, that the character district that you're working in allows the things you think you're going to do. Because sometimes, we have great meetings with developers and architects, and then they go back and get in their head, and they come back and say, "This is what you said, and it doesn't resemble anything we said." So, this is the gut check.
So, is there preliminary drainage as a part of the concept plan?
Can you answer that? Yeah, it absolutely is. So, in your...
I want him to answer that.
Go ahead.
If it's an area where we think we need it, absolutely. I'll tell you, I don't think we've hammered out exactly the details.
And that's fine. I just think, if I was a developer in the audience, I'd be asked, I'd be wanting to...
So, understand that we aren't at the 30,000-foot level, but we're not at ground level either. We are looking for policy direction, conceptually. We're talking to you in theory, but there is a lot of highway for us to cover between now and May 24.
So, the concept plan in the site is almost, the site visits like a development workshop with staff, right? You're talking it out, you're feeling it out, and then opportunity to, for us to, again, be a part of the process and not where they come to and we hit them with regulations, so...
You know, in that vein, I talked to a developer today who was, once he worked through it and checked all of the boxes in his head, he was actually almost giddy with surprise, because normally, cities aren't this forward-thinking. And his comment is, this is the second time that he's had this happen recently. He went to another community and laid the plan down, and they said, "Well, wait a minute, how come you don't have more of this and more of that?" And he looked at him and said, "I've never had a city say I could do more of any of that." So, part of this process lets us challenge the paradigms and be able to acknowledge the environmental pieces, and again, make sure we've got that communication before we spend real money.
At this point, they had, would have gone through the code, they would have analyzed their entire site, they're ready to say, "I'm coming in with a real project at this The next process would be private, I'm sorry, the public frontage plans. And the public frontage plans are how the public infrastructure's going to be handled. It's when you would have a preliminary plat, your construction plat, and your final plat. And we'll get into these, construction plan. Did I say that?
You said plat.
I'm sorry, construction plan, I apologize, misread that. Step three is the private development plans. And the private development plans, they would establish a private frontage plan. And I will show you those in just a minute of how that actually works. Their site development plan, how they're laying out the site, what type of materials they're using, where their drainage facilities are going, where their parking's going, where the trash is located, where their lighting is going, where their signage is going, how the building relates to the street, that type of thing gets here. And then, their building plan, how are they building the building? And those are the architectural elements and the individual key standards for building. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I don't understand the difference between private development plan and public frontage plan.
So, the public is what we're going to own? It's the infrastructure, it's the streets, the water, the utilities, it's the public realm? That's where we care greatly about fiscal sustainability.
I got you. Okay. I was just not understanding the terminology.
And the terminology really is, this is brand-new terminology in it, so I apologize. I think that this is going to be a lot to comprehend, but once we get through this and once we, this becomes normal practice, all of these terms really do make sense. We've gone through these with staff and your council, your city attorney, they're starting to understand, "Oh, this really makes sense," and actually, it does correlate directly with how development works. And so, that's the intent, is to set these clear lines of delineation between the public side and the private side, and set clear expectations on the front end, and that's...
I kind of view them as buckets. The public realm is our bucket, the private realm is your bucket, and there are different rules that will apply in the public bucket, and then there are different rules that will apply in the private bucket. So, we're trying to draw a delineation, so that we can eliminate the confusion, because when you're in the public realm, there are certain standards that are going to apply, because the public's going to have access to it, the public's going to maintain it. On the private realm, that's when you get into personal property rights. And so, when we, we heard that in the design and the code rodeo, so we've been very clear trying to help with that line, so it's real. There's no gray matter, and we put them in buckets, so that we know where we start and end, and where private property starts and ends.
Section three will be the place types. And today, we'll go over your place type map, the place type descriptions, place type distributions, and the general regulations for the place types. Oh, is the image missing? That's okay. It is in your packet, I apologize, there's, the image is missing on the slide. So, the first place type is nature, it's P1, and it consists of lands in a natural state or reverting to wilderness condition, including lands unsuitable for settlement due to topography, hydrology, or vegetation. P1 is intended to preserve areas that contain sensitive habitats, adaptive or passive open spaces or parks, and limited agricultural uses. And so, this could be planting fruit trees along a trail, right, that is for access for the public. It could be preservation of creeks and tributaries for bikeways to create brand-new networks of transportation systems. It could just be preservation of nature, so that drainage has not become an issue. You generally don't add impervious cover in these areas. I would like to invite you to think big, though, about some areas where you may want to add into nature, and maybe those would be special exceptions going forward, you know?
This would normally, in most communities, be something you check the box and move on, because you wouldn't do it much. But given the floodplain, given the toad habitat, and given the loblawly pines, this is going to be a really important tool in our toolbox. Because part of what makes us authentic Bashdrop are those things. And we can't act like they don't matter and let people develop over them. So, I'm calling attention to them, because these would be ones you'd go, "Yeah, okay," but they're really important in some of our characteristic areas. I can think in the lost ponds, loblawly area, the way that we would meet the conservation standards is by leaving a lot of that in a nature state, and think of it in the context of being an amenity, that you could then market, because you can hike and mountain bike, and we've built into the development these areas, so that they're features. And so, P1, even though it's the least dense, in some areas is going to be the most significant place type that you'll debate. So, I'm calling real special attention to it, because normally, most towns would look at it and go, "Yeah, that's the floodplain, that's what you call it, check the box and move on." And we've got way bigger opportunities with P1 here.
Place type two is rural, and P2 is for rural living. Some people want to live in rural areas and still have close proximity to town. You all have that in Bashdrop, and so, we've coded based off of the character that you have. You have rural living in really close proximity to downtown. It says, "It's also for food production and to be located and not as a nuisance to more intensely inhabited areas. P2 consists of sparsely settled lands and open or cultivated states." So, that's rural living. Place type three, P3 is a neighborhood. And neighborhood, or P3 consists of low-density residential areas adjacent to higher-density place types with some mixed, with some mixed use. Planning is naturalistic, and setbacks vary from relatively deep to shallow. Roads and blocks may be irregular to accommodate natural conditions. This is an area where humans are becoming more intensely settled. Generally, in Bashdrop, the lot sizes are a quarter acre, right? So, after they broke down the 330-foot grids, they divided the lots into quarter acre. Some are smaller, and you have a variety of lifestyle choices that can happen within this area. In the P3 area, it is for residential intensities only, other than limited small offices that would be allowed within that district. And so, P3 is...
Pecan Street.
Yeah, Pecan Street.
Between Chestnut and Cedar. It's all residential, varying setbacks. The closer you are, say, at spring and Pecan Street, you've got the Craftsman, and the Johnson's house is fairly close to the sidewalk. As you move down Pecan Street, Councilmember Ennis's house sits farther back, it's larger, it's on an acre lot. As you move closer into North Bashdrop, the lots get smaller, the houses get smaller, and they move closer to the sidewalk. So, that's a neighborhood where the house size dictates the setback in the yard, and there's nothing on it that, but houses. And so, that would be a P3 neighborhood. You've got the potential for some tiny houses, like in my neighborhood. I've got a 450-square-foot little house on one corner, and across the street, 750-square feet. So, you could see a variety of housing sizes in a P3 neighborhood, but it would be all houses.
And we will get into some of the standards that associate with the place types when we get into building types. What we'll be doing is introducing particular building types that would fit within particular place types. So, in P3, for example, you could have a villa, which is a large house, a house, a small house, or even a duplex, the way that it's currently proposed, and as well as a fourplex. We're trying to align the financing tools with your ordinances, and under conventional FHA lending, you can build a single-family house to a fourplex under a conventional FHA loan. We believe that P3 should be, have the ability to house all of those housing options, and maybe that would be appropriate in some areas and not others. Those are the type of details we would like the policy, policy direction on as we go forward. The next place type is neighborhood mix or mix, which is, consists of more intense building types, which provide more lifestyle choices. It provides for a mix of residential building types. Commercial and office uses are allowed in this district, only in house-form structures. So, this is introduction of your local tavern, your local barber shop, or, you know, hair salon, into a house-form structure that's in close proximity to the neighborhood. And the street types consist of a mix of, mixed use, but primarily residential and urban fabric. As we were on a tour yesterday, we saw that you all have like a floral shop in the middle of a neighborhood, but it's in a house form, it's not disruptive. And so, what we're thinking is, there's alternative uses like that that can function in house-form structures and be assigned in the appropriate type of location.
My neighborhood is a great example of that. There are a number of houses that have been converted to a surveyor, to an attorney's office, antique shop, and we're all just kind of co-mingled together. So, when you're now walking up and down the street, you're going to find the office, the commercial use that's available, but it hasn't impacted how you feel about it, because it still looks and feels and functions as if it is a house.
And this is also, we had conversations last night, I know it was late, but you had talked about it being a house, maybe it being an office, and then converting back to a house. This is where you would see that type of activity happening.
Driven by the market.
Yes, ma'am. Furthermore, we will be introducing new building types into this as well, row homes, town homes, mansion houses. So, we have a variety of new building types that we would like to introduce into this category as well.
I want to, I want to mention that that was one of the things today, that I said that to a couple of developers, and they were stunned, that y'all were so willing to let market drive this. And I talked about the conversation that y'all had had last night about parking, and that the market would dictate what was used in that building, and it would ebb and flow based on what the market would bear. And their eyes lit up, and they're like, "Your council's talking about market?" Yes, yes, we are. And that is important, because that's what gives you the fiscal sustainability. If you don't, what you get are the big boxes that have a seven-to-10-year lifespan, and when they're done, nobody else can go in them, because they were built for that one use. So, in order to get that fiscal sustainability, this mix becomes really, really important. So, all of the conversations that you're having, and Matt will cover this later, with lighting standards and parking standards, this is where that matters most, is in P4 and P5. Those decisions to be as generous as you are, because you really get fiscal sustainability tied to the market, this is where that will begin to show up. That's where those decisions you'll begin to see, "Oh, yeah, we talked about that." Yep, you did, and it showed up in P4.
And place type five, we're calling core. P5 consists of higher-density, mixed-use building types that accommodate retail, offices, row houses, apartments. It has a tight network of streets with wide sidewalks, street trees, steady street tree plantings, buildings are close to the sidewalks. P5 is a highly walkable area. Continuous line of buildings is critical to define the public realm to allow for visible activity along the street edge. This is downtown Bashdrop. You all have this series of buildings, they're all brought up to the street edge, there's not gaps in between the buildings, and that continuity provides for that wonderful outdoor living room feel that you get. That's this environment that would be created through this classification.
So, that, I'm fine with all this. We've seen these a couple of times, right? These place type one through five and everything. My question, and I don't know if this is the right place to ask it, and I, we have received materials that included special districts, but it just said special districts, I don't really know what those are for. But my, it's great, and, you know, some people can find the job at the hair salon and the doctor, lawyer, Indian chief kind of thing, but some people need a, an employer, and, you know, a couple hundred employers, and I would like those people to come to Bashdrop. So, are they a place type? Are they a district? Where does business and industry go?
Sure. And so, business and industry can fit in this, but if they, if they're wanting a larger building type, what we would do is, we would write a set of standards for them. They would be able to self-calibrate within a special district. And when that does occur, they would be able to come straight to council and get their special district approved. We will set the regulations with blank templates, so that basically, the end-user would be able to get their, write their descriptions based off of these parameters. They need a 50,000-square-foot building, that's their building footprint. Whatever their setbacks need, whatever their drive aisles they need, they would be able to calibrate it. And then, what would happen is, the council would apply that district onto the map. We do believe there are areas, I was meeting with Mr. Camelander this afternoon on this item, there may be areas that we would code special district on the front end, and so that that guesswork gets taken out of it. So, when that end-user comes to town, your code's not irrelevant, you have specific code standards that you write, and you customize it for them to meet those standards.
But my more specific question is, is that a place type six, or is that not even in place types, and it's, we should be discussing it in the district?
It is a special district, and it would apply in the Bluffs. The Bluffs is the industrial park.
And are we saying, I mean, we can't be saying that, because council hasn't voted on it yet, but obviously, if we're doing what exists today, Bluffs, special district, but are we saying that's the only place that we're going to allow it?
No.
Okay.
We know today, we need to do that, that's what he's saying. So, he's going to fix it where it's not crippling Mike, because he can't do it, because our zoning doesn't allow it.
And that's, I'm afraid, I don't want someone to look through P1 through P5, and boy, I'd bring, you know, I'd like to employ several hundred people, but I'm not allowed to do that. So, as long as there's an answer for them.
Yes.
Okay.
So, let me say this about that. There are, you have identified the challenge with the vision, okay? Most of this is easy, because it's infill, and we already have a sense of what it's going to be, so we can work around it. But what we don't always know is what the driver's going to be. And the Meadows, which is around Seton, is a great example. Until Seton announced that it was going to be built there, we didn't really have a vision for the Meadows, we just knew it was developable. But now that we've got a regional hospital opportunity, we can envision that from that would come multi-story office buildings that would house medical-type uses that would support Seton. You could envision then, some multifamily that would come from that, because not only do you have residents and doctors that may want that... do you have residents and doctors that may want that lifestyle that work at Seton, you could see some empty nesters that would like the wellness programs that Seton have in the, in the community that they have. So that driver then begins to dictate what that regulation plan would be. But it could have just as easily been something else, that industrial use that could be that driver that then would have something else. So what our goal is, is to write something so it's always an option, but it's not an option that's going to happen at staff level. I'm not going to be comfortable with my team making a decision for you that we're going to plop a 300-acre or something in the middle of somewhere when you envisioned it to be this beautiful residential subdivision, and we hadn't had that conversation. So those are the kinds of things, because their impact and what they do, we'll be able to have some great conversations. They'll know they're going to be welcome, but the final execution of, "Yep, you can go there," will be the mayor and council, because that is a policy decision for which you've not told us is okay. So we're not saying you can't come, we're just saying staff can't approve it. Does that make sense?
I have a question, just on all your, all your place types, and I know the zoning and we're all working this out. So let's say I'm in place 1, 2, 3, or whatever, so there's not going to be, this house is zone, there's not like, and that one is a commercial zone, and a residential zone, there's not going to be that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. If you're in place type 3, it means you're residential in nature. If you're in place type 4, you can be residential, you could be office, you could have a bookstore that...
But if I'm in 3, and let's say there's a vacant house, I can't be an attorney there?
If, if that were the case, you would need to change your place type to 4, and that would be a request to the council. That, that would be a change of, of use. And so particularly if it's, you know, in the middle of a neighborhood.
Well, it says neighborhood, and some mixed use, so let's, some, you know, man, I just don't want to put a...
So, so let me answer your question this way. It will be allowed if you decide to allow it. That's a policy decision. So part of what we're going to go through this evening in every character district, y'all are going to decide the place types. And there's going to be some areas that you're going to be comfortable with a 4, and there's going to be some areas y'all go, "Nope, nope, we're just not going to allow business to be there." That's a P3. Now, if something happens and somebody wants to have that conversation, they get to come visit with you. We just won't do it at a staff level.
But P3 says it was some mixed use.
If you read it in the entirety, ma'am, it actually says, "P3 consists of low-density residential adjacent to place types with some mixed use."
Okay, alright.
So the place types next to it would, would have...
It could be across the street, down the block.
You might want to just take that out.
Yes, ma'am.
That's confusing.
I'm just saying, it's a little confusing, what's exactly adjacent from whose house?
We will rewrite it. It's intended to be a bridge.
Oh.
Because every one of these, you're going from a low-density to a high-density, so P3 is a nice bridge to something a little more intense before you get to a P5.
Well, I understand, I just, it would be, you know, I just think it'd be a little easier if you rewrote it a little clearer.
Yes, ma'am.
This was a place type example showing what you have in Bash Drop currently, and so from an aerial view, it looks like this. From a street view, you know, you've got a walking bridge, this is P1, and in the future, it would look like that. Place type 2 rural, looks like this. In Bash Drop, it looks like that, and it could look like this in place type 3. I'm sorry, in place type 2. Neighborhood, this is what it looks like in Bash Drop. This is what it looks like from the street edge in Bash Drop. This is what it could look like. I wanted to show a higher intensity of uses in place type 3 that shows the units closer to the street edge. This is where front porches are brought up to the street. There's very shallow setbacks. It's a walkable neighborhood, but the buildings directly relate to the street.
What's the building height?
In the current draft code, it says 2 stories. And so that would be a policy question. Do you want 2 stories? Do you want 3 stories? It's, those are the type...
So you're doing it by stories, or are you doing it by height? Do you have a recommendation?
We recommend doing it by stories, and that way the architectural characteristics won't limit height. When you get down to height, you may have a parapet that you want to exceed 2 feet, and it exceeds your height by 2 feet, and you've got to now take it to council. And so that was the reason that we decided stories was appropriate. Again, that could be a policy decision as well. So the next thing that we did is, we looked at the place type distribution. How do the, how do these place types get distributed to create walkable holistic neighborhoods, full communities? This percentage that you see on the screen is the exact representation of downtown. We started from Main Street. We did an analysis of your existing place types, and this is what your downtown breaks into. 5% nature, 2% rural, I'm sorry, 10% rural, 15% neighborhood, 40% neighborhood mix, and about 30% dense T5 downtown. And so our recommendation is to allow for a range of these, and this range could also be determined by character district. And so maybe in some character districts, you want higher intensities, and some character districts, you want less intensities. And what we would like to do is use the characteristics that are out there, or what you're trying to accomplish with those character districts, to inform this as we move forward. But again, we would recommend a range to be appropriate so that we're not stifling or locking up the market with these calculations.
So the percentages and the recommended ranges for the district sets the, the character and the feel, because if you're a P4, it's, it's the same in any district?
Under the, the current proposal, we, we are willing and able to actually calibrate that though by character district if it's necessary. So if there are some key features in the area that says, "Well, we think that place type 3 should allow office in this district,"
But maybe not in this other district.
Right.
Okay, so, so you have a fundamental skeleton, but then if there's things, like it's stupid for them to keep coming back in this one district because we're always going to say yes, you could just make that adjustment.
Yes, ma'am. The fundamental skeleton, by the way, is based off of your existing environment. That's, all of this was coded off your existing environment. This is a direct translation of your downtown.
And mayor, you have hit on exactly why the character district concept works. Absent that, you have to treat it as a one-size-fits-all approach. And we've tried to find the character districts for that reason, because we started knowing we weren't a one-size-fits-all approach, but we had to get in the buckets so we could make those calibrations, and it actually worked.
Okay, I know this is completely off-topic, so get out your pen and put it off to the side.
Oh, oh.
One of the things that has come to mind with the 2-story and the intensity and all is view corridors, particularly like to the iconic bridge, because I, I think that we like driving down the road and being able to see the bridge and having it built up right up next to it, and you have absolutely no view of it unless you happen to live in the penthouse next. So I don't know how or where to address that, but that's something that's come to mind.
I do, I, sorry.
Well, go ahead.
I, I believe that what we could do is, when we start establishing this grid, we can run grid angles to actually ensure that there are appropriate view corridors to the, to the, the bridge, you know, in, in future planning. I think that's a really great idea.
What I would also say is, there may be some instances where, and let's use the bridge, that we are, given the topography or whatever, only going to allow the first string of development to be a certain height. That's a policy decision. Though, that is also the reason that these character districts work. And so along the river, and we'll get into this, on one side of the river, it's the river district. On the other side, it's the water district. And we purposely separated the two districts along the same side of the river because one's higher than the other because of the bluff. And we recognize that there would be some things perhaps you'd want to do in the, in the water district, because that's where historic downtown is, that maybe aren't as important on the river district, and you do something else to enhance that. So that's exactly where that would go. So what I would say to y'all is, is as you're visiting with citizens about this, and you have one of those moments like the mayor just did, and say, "Well, what about this?" Write it down. Because those are policy decisions that can be coded because you chose to put them in the character district to preserve authentic Bash Drop. And that's what I hear you saying, is that bridge is authentic Bash Drop, and we want to sit and enjoy it every day. Okay, well, we can do that. And that's part of what y'all decide as we move through this.
So talk to me about accessory units, because I haven't heard that mentioned.
We do get into accessory units when we get into the building types, and we will discuss that just now. The next slide...
But I'll just go ahead and tell you, you're going to be pleased with the answer.
Yeah.
Matt, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the 5%, 10% is how much of each one of those place types you're going to allow generally in the city?
Yes, sir. Within, within a pedestrian shed, and I'm going to show you a pedestrian shed right here, Mr. Ennis.
But, but that's not just made-up numbers. That's exactly what Bash Drop is.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then we stick with that?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you.
No, no.
With, with the distribution.
That's your decision tonight, is we're going to walk through each one of these character districts, and what I would say is, that's a starting point. But if you want to tweak it, because there's something about that district that's important that you know, there are numbers on the page, sir, and, and your job tonight is to offer guidance to the consultants, because absent that, we're going to use this kind of as the model. And, and y'all know best what authentic Bash Drop needs to be and its history. So if at any point none of this makes you happy, then you have to tell us what happy looks like, and we'll program it into that district, and we'll also, because each one of these districts has a definition, and part of the, the evolution of these definitions is to capture those things, whatever those things are, and note that they're important and why they're important, and they begin to be some of the predominant factors that will drive that character of that neighborhood.
Is your intent that any special districts are, come out of P5, or come out separately? Or, because if you don't put special districts in the percentage, you're never going to have them.
The intent was that special districts would, would be separate from the place type distribution. And so what you would be able to do is calculate what percent you would like to take out of, and so that could be a conversation at the time the regulating plan got submitted, or at the time that the assessment for the special district is being created.
Or you could do a range for P5 and give it a range, and it includes special district, right? I mean, there's more than one way to skin the cat, I guess, is one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So if there are areas that, as we go through this, that y'all are comfortable with a special district being in, it would be helpful to note that. Then that could be written in as a place type in that character zone or character district without creating an expectation that you could get one anywhere.
Agreed, but clearly 71 corridor makes sense. Clearly, flat and plain makes sense, clearly. Toad habitat, maybe it's only along 71 for a certain distance, or maybe it's, we're not allowing it at all.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
I just, I don't want it to be an afterthought. I don't want somebody to pick it up and be like, "Well, it's, it's a bedroom community," because they don't allow, they're not really looking for employers.
Yes.
And so what I would say to, to you about this, as we go through this, we're going to have these conversations. The big greenfield spaces, and we don't have a ton of them, so we could literally take the list today and pick the 4 we know are going to be special districts. The ability to move forward in future years as we address our ETJ and how we build out, part of the template that, that we need to put into this plan is, as those character zones or character districts get written in the future, that, that template then becomes a plug-and-play. Because we do have some areas in our ETJ where they will come in and want to do some kind of development agreement, and the development agreement will mirror a character district, if you will, and we would begin to help with the regulation of that, which we've done through consent agreement, but it would have these elements in it. Those conversations are slightly tricky, because again, we, we don't know how to drain on them. So as we work through this, I don't know that, that other than the probably 4 identified green spaces, we could do it outright, but we just have to recognize, we're not saying no, it just requires council to say yes.
The next slide, Mr. Ennis, this really answers your question, is pedestrian shed. So in general sense, a pedestrian shed is about 80 acres in a circular manner, it could be 160 in a linear manner. What we did is, we actually wrapped in your farm lot and your building blocks to show, so it's, it's essentially about 16 of your building blocks, your 330-foot blocks, that would equate to one pedestrian shed. So that was just a unit of measurement to give some scale and reference to this. Section 4 will be the character district, and we have a, a separate handout we'll go through in just a little while here. So we will introduce the character district map, descriptions, and then additional regulations for the districts in just a second here. And we would love feedback and policy direction on the names of the character districts, the area, as well as what we'll go through in just a little while here, is the special features within each character district. Your, your staff and city manager did a ton of work helping us to do this. We've run geographic information models on how this would map out to the community and created this map for you. And so we could go through them briefly. You have the, the downtown character district located in the dark gray here. It's probably easier to see on your actual packet, but hopefully this, oops, will be useful for people viewing at home. The next character district is the Cattlemen's District, and it's located on the 71, north of 71 to the west. Then you have the Vista, located just down on the southern section of 71, south of the Cattlemen's. Old Town is located in the downtown in the light pink or purple color. New Edition, which is the, the new addition, is located there. And District 71 is the corridor along 71. This is going to be where you would probably see adaptive reuse or infill at some, at some time where those areas start to redevelop. It could be 10 years, 25, 50 years, you know, but we're, we're coding it for the adaptation of that area to, to more. Next you have the Meadows, which is the district where Seton is located. Then you have the Cultural Arts District, which is just adjacent to Old Town and Downtown, located in the pink there. You have the Water Street District, which is located right along the water, which we'll be talking about a little more. The Historic Highway District, which was Highway 50 and Old Austin Avenue, the River District, 150, I'm sorry, 150. I'm sorry? Old Austin Highway. And then you have the River District lining the river here, and you have Lost Pines, the large district. You have Riverside Grove. Oh, there it is. And Mayfest Hill, which is, east of this, there it is. The Bash Drop State Park, which is up here, and Riverside Grove, oops. And then the bluff.
Councilmember Nelson, Hunter's Crossing is not on here because it was part of a planned development, so anywhere we have a planned development is the underlying zoning, so we have a couple of those. Riverside Grove actually went in as straight zoning, so they didn't have a planned development when they went in, hence why Riverside Grove is on there and not Hunter's Crossing.
Matt, why don't we have, why don't you have that little section right there next to Riverside Grove, between Riverside Grove and the river designated?
Because it's in the county, it's not in the city.
It's an out parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we should let the county know that if, we are more than willing to regulate it and make it conform to districts if they would choose to do so.
I appreciate, I appreciate that explanation. At some point in time, I'd like to remove that generic designation from there to kind of give it some, some meat to it, to make it part of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
And we should do that for, because it's Riverside Grove, Pecan Park, and Piney Creek, right? So maybe they get a, kind of a hashtag or something. So maybe they get a kind of a hashtag or something, but they're neighborhoods.
Right. We just did that for purposes of this evening so that we don't think we can go in and change something when we can't.
Makes perfect sense.
And we will get into the character districts in just a little. I'm going to run through this, rest of this. And in fact, the public and private realm, I'm going to introduce these concepts and how it will flow, but based on the information we received today, and we will be recalibrating and coding in the input that we received and updating the council on April 23rd. So on April 23rd, we are going to be coming back to you all to focus heavily on the public realm and the private realm and the individual standards that go along with that. That will be the entire conversation on the 23rd.
So let me reframe that just a little bit. What Matt's going to do tonight is educate you on the importance of the conversation you're going to have on the 23rd. But literally, it hasn't even been 24 hours since we got feedback on lighting, we got feedback on parking, today we dealt with transportation, today we dealt with drainage, and the consultant team and staff needs time to calibrate that, and so on the 23rd, those decisions will be, will come back to you based on some of the input you give us this evening on character zones and the place types.
And the chart that Jordan handed out is how the building types work and some of our draft percentages of how the individual lots and place types would be calibrated. So what you'll see is you're starting to see these percentages, but furthermore and more importantly, you can actually see what's being coded through these place types, and we would like to go through this on the 23rd with the council so that we can refine these standards. We're going to have recommendations for standards, for base standards, based off of the downtown, and then we'll have some recommendations for standards based on the input that we received from the community, but we would love the council to help us calibrate these to really localize those standards to be reflective of the community.
And so, because I know it's going to be the first question, on block perimeter, 1320 is 330 by 330. Your 2880 is the 7...
720 by 720 by 720, and the...
5760 is 14...
1440 by 1440 by 1440. So as you grow back...
What are we talking about?
Yes, ma'am. And we, again, I apologize, we really are not getting down into those...
I just don't understand what we're...
Where it says block size?
It's the block perimeters.
They're telling you...
Oh, the dimensions.
You're not just seeing it as a perimeter, you're just seeing it as it's a 330-foot block.
Right. And so, and those numbers do not include the right-of-way calculations out of it. So again, the chart that we have in your packet today is the accurate numbers including all of the right-of-way sections. We measured all of this out to ensure that that's correct. These block perimeters do not include the right-of-way sections, and those numbers will be updated to include those parameters. What we were trying to articulate, though, is that block perimeters would be introduced into these concepts so that you could see the network of streets, the gridded network of streets on your thoroughfare master plan produced within these place types. That was the intent of having that on there. So going back to the public realm section, real quick, we'll run through the intent, process, the street sections, the public frontage standards, which were just handed out, lighting and signage. Those are the elements that would be housed and made up into the public realm. And in fact, the signage is going to be housed in the public and private realm, so it will be addressed in both locations depending on the type of signage and how it works.
So this is really the process, because we started over here with process, so it really started with intent.
Intent for the public realm. This is the people who do these sections.
You've already captured intent with your purpose statement.
Okay.
So what we're doing, you see the colored boxes at the bottom? So we've worked through general provisions, process, place types. We're going to come back to character districts and spend quite a bit of time this evening on it, but he's just working you through the bottom so that you have a concept of how all of this is going to work as y'all work through it.
I understand, but where you had step one, really, that was just, there's a walkthrough before that. So there's really an intent piece to that before you get to the process. I guess that's all I was pointing out.
Yes, ma'am. The intent for the overall code, that's correct. And this is the intent for the public realm, and so it's in particular. And so we had said early on, we wanted to write intent statements to lead into the code so that it provided language to lean back to. And so this intent we gathered through the entire process. But streets are intended for use by vehicular and pedestrian traffic to provide access to lots and civic spaces. Pedestrian comfort shall be the primary consideration for the design of streets. Design conflicts between vehicular and pedestrian movement shall be decided in favor of the pedestrian. This is a rearrangement of the way that we've been building streets for the last 80 years. And streets are public spaces where, and it's critical that we get those elements right. A diversity of street type, I'm sorry, street tree species should be planted throughout the city of Bastrop to promote resistance to disease and insect blight for the trees. Street trees should be planted to create visually unified streetscapes. So maybe there are areas in different districts where different trees are appropriate. We'd like to get down in that level of detail and placement of trees. And so maybe in P3 in the Cattlemen's, it's really natural, and you don't have an alignment of trees, right? Because it's more intended to be rural in nature. I'm just giving an example, but that's the intent. We'd like to get down into that level of specificity at some point. Next, you have process. The new streets shall be required when shown on the city's adopted master thoroughfare plan, which is tonight. Proportionality would be measured, and where new streets are not required, building and/or construction permits shall not be issued for a development or redevelopment of any street within the city of Bastrop prior to approval of a public frontage plan. This says that you cannot construct streets without showing, or a building, without showing how it's going to interact with that individual street. So if you do not have to do a regulating plan based on the size of your lot, I'm about to throw you guys a... The council mayor pro tem already looked at me. If we're making interpretation that if you have small lots for infill development, that they would not be required to do regulating plans. And so anything less than, is it 2.5 acres or 3 acres?
We were going to base it off the actual physical size of a farm, no, a building block.
A building block.
Not a farm lot.
Correct. That's correct.
So it ended up being 3.4.
2.2 acres.
Minus the right-of-way, so we'll get there.
We're still working on this, but the intent is that if you have something less than a building block, you should be able to just go build. The place type would be identified, and in that scenario...
If the street's in place.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
If the street's in place.
Yes, ma'am. And if, under that scenario, this is when this would be applicable, and that's why that was part of the process. Next, we have street sections, and I would like to spend some time on these, and it may be easier to actually use our boards to talk through this rather than the slides, and so I'm going to...
Okay, so it's 6:40, and we're going to take a bio break. We're in 7:40. I wish it was 6:40.
At your special district question, way easier than anticipated. We are working with Mike and Jean at BDC and we've identified about 20 to 25 developable sites and we're looking at them from a sewer standpoint to make sure we can get infrastructure to them. We will take those same sites and work with Matt and our consultant team on special districts and use those to identify opportunities and have those already identified in the book so that that is handled and that would be a good way for us when we identify to look at it holistically.
And I like the comprehensiveness of that because there's no point in looking somewhere else and asking if we can't get service to them or whatever. And Mike was behind me. Are you still behind me?
I did.
I think that's a really good idea and I don't want it to be just the industrial park and we've got to give them, it shouldn't be, let's play needle in the haystack and we'll see how this works out. We've got to control some of our own destiny. Thank you.
I'll stay close. What we're doing is we're introducing brand-new building types and the way that the building types would be determined is purely by where they fit on the lot and that's the measurement. If they're an edge yard building, it means that they are surrounded by yard. And so it's your typical house. It's a villa and it's a duplex. Side yard would mean that the buildings are off to the side. Oh, thanks. Okay, there we go. That the building would be located and the disposition of the building would be to the side and it has a front porch, maybe two-story front porch fronting into the side yard. This building pattern's not very prevalent in Bastrop and what we're doing is just introducing the possibility for it to occur. And each of these building types are going to be located into the particular place types.
Saying that's two stories with a attic or what do you, because that's not looking like just two stories to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were referring to, two stories was for P3, for place type three. This would be in place type four. These, we have, in the draft code, do not allow these in place type three. That could be a policy decision that you may want to do that. These are generally three stories, two to three stories, and so we would want to raise the limit. Under place type three, that is located as a place type four. And then rear yard. These, all of these buildings would be only in place type four, the way that we have it drafted now. Row houses, and it shows where it fits on the lot with an accessory dwelling unit in the rear, which is what you were asking about Councilmember Jones. An apartment building, and you'll notice where it locates on the lot, and you'll see a commercial building and where it locates on the lot. So, the reason that that's important and to preface the street sections is because the way that these buildings relate to the public and private realm is the only, no, let me rephrase that, is the major regulation that is landing how the built environment will come together. For example, let's say that they choose a neighborhood-type street section. I can bring these forward. Another move around. So, we all can see that. Neighborhood street section. And again, we built all of these street sections off of your 55.5 right-of-way so that each section would be housed within your existing right-of-way and you don't have to replicate different sections. 55.5 and you would demonstrate, I'm building a house. This is a house, and the house would be located what's called the second layer of the lot. The principal structure is there, and then if you're building a house, you can say, I'm going to build a porch. I'm going to have bay windows. I'm going to have a stoop. I'm going to build a courtyard. And you can select the type of frontage that you would like to have and how that frontage would interact with the private and public realm. This is the critical piece of landing the buildings to create a sense of place, that walkable environment. This is a example of one where the buildings are right up to the street edge, zero setback. So, your entryway and your steps come directly down into the public realm at the sidewalk level. An alternative would be one where you have wider setbacks, maybe a state houses, larger structures, and maybe you have a 50-foot first layer. And your second layer is where your principal building falls and you have a porch, but the porch still has a front yard in front of it, right? And so we're coding different types so that the development community going forward can select how that works. But the important element here is, this is the bulk of the code, is that the way that the buildings land on the lot and the way that they relate to the public realm is the critical piece and that we identified very early on when we first arrived in Bastrop and started to introduce you to those concepts. In a commercial setting, instead of having to do license agreements and having all of these awnings or signs and balconies encroaching into the right-of-way, we're going to put them in the first layer of the lot. So, this would still be the private realm. This would still be on the private development side. And so what would happen is, the, in a commercial setting, this would be a row house with maybe a shop front at the ground floor. They would have their hanging sign, a awning or balcony coming out over the, this section, and that first layer would be right here where they have furnishing zones, maybe have tables out front. And then the public sidewalk starts right there. And so maybe that public sidewalk is 10 feet. Then you have your planter strip, your parking, your drive lanes, and then you go on the opposite side and you would have a similar thing. This is an example of a place type four directly adjacent to a place type three. We were talking about those earlier and so that's how that would transition. You'd have a house, and generally in this sense, the house would be brought up to the street edge as well. So, again, the second layer determines the principal building, and then you determine how you want your first layer to interact with the public and private realm.
Okay, so, and I'm going from what we had as deliverables, so I don't know what slide it's on, and I'm only bringing it up because you've said this word several times when we're looking at this picture. One of the things says, "A first-level residential or lodging use shall be raised a minimum of three feet above the average grave of public frontage." And everything I see there has steps, but not everybody wants to go up three feet of steps to get into their residence.
Right. And so, in appropriate areas where you have this transition, the reason that that is important, and it is, it's a critical feature, and this is a policy decision. We would write this standard so that the elevation of the front entrance is not where you're peering directly into their living room. It's raising them up a bit and it actually forms that separation from the street edge so that you still feel like you have privacy.
So, how do you, an ADA ramp, how do I get in if I can't get up the stairs?
Either rear access or you integrate the ramp into it. I mean, there's alternatives of doing that. Particularly, we are not regulating minimum lot dimensions, so out of all these building types, if you were a developer, you could go select a building type, you could maximize your lot dimensions. That is a recommendation, Mayor, and if you all would like to remove that, I mean, that is a policy decision.
I just, I didn't know what, my note was, why? I'm not saying no. I'm just trying to understand what the logic is and more importantly, then what's the consequence of adopting that policy.
So, I'm not throwing Councilmember Ennis under the bus, but when we talked about authentic Bastrop some time ago, porches and the ability to be out front and engage with your neighbors was an important element that was, I think, Councilmember Jones and Ennis both mentioned. And so, we have integrated that in there, but that is the issue.
And not all. Porches have to be three feet off the ground.
That is true.
I would say that the allowing for means of access other than stairs would be the answer to that question, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. You could build ramps.
Except, is it the same feel if it's nothing but ADA ramps as you're walking along the sidewalk?
That's correct.
You can incorporate those so that they're visually pleasing as part of that. I'm sure that you have examples of that. I mean, it's not like you just have a ramp right up.
It depends on the length.
He said, through the back is the most visually pleasing way to do it.
Right. I mean, you can do ramps in the front, depending on the grade and the ramp dimensions would determine the length of the ramp, but it can be integrated into the structure. It just would have to be accounted for. But that was the intent of that.
I would see if it was a row house, that'd be a real problem.
Right.
Because you wouldn't have access in the back and you wouldn't have enough frontage to have the grade to get the ramp up. But in a house like that looks like it is, it looked like you'd have enough
Yes, sir.
...grade to put it, the stairs up the front and the ramp on the side.
Yes, sir. That's possible. That's correct. So, we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of this and how these two relate. That was the important element of the street sections. We are introducing.
So, and I'm, Matt, just, and I know we don't have to decide tonight, but I just got to get in my mind what I'm thinking about. Is, this says every first level, is it in certain place areas or is it every residential house?
No, it's not every residential house. I wonder why it says that. Do you know if that...
It just says, "Private realm building placements," and I may be reading it wrong.
No, no, I don't, you may not be. We can go back, Mayor, and double-check that language.
I would just like to understand where it's intended to be.
Yeah. It was intended for certain place types.
Okay.
So, we, I'll go back and double-check that. We still have to calibrate the individual place type standards with that, and so we'll make sure to do that.
If I could just chime in just for a second. By the way, good evening. My name is Milosav Sekicaj. Some of them, some of you maybe may not remember me. I've been here a long time. Anyway, and I'm part of the design team. This is one of the traditional patterns. And the pattern, now we're talking about pattern, also I mentioned the pattern, there is actually very historic but also works very well. And the pattern is that you, next to the street, you have a planting strip. On the planting strip there are trees that offer some protection.
Can you do the mic?
Sorry? Yeah. Okay. Next, next to the planting strip is actually the front of the lot, which is slightly elevated. Could be, but it doesn't have to be. And then you have another few steps to get to the porch. What that does, it creates an opportunity for you when you're sitting on your porch and the neighbor across the street is sitting on their porch, you can see each other. The cars are not blocking the view. So, it, you know, some people say that we suffer from epidemic of loneliness now in this country, and I think what contributes to that partly, to great deal, is actually the way we lay out school and stuff. The other thing that contributes is the new technology, computers and iPhones, so we don't really. So, I think one of our first tasks, and I mentioned that maybe early in this process, is to create opportunities for people to initiate and stay relationships over time. Community doesn't mean anything without relationships. Community actually is a web of relationships that you are a part of or you're not a part of. So, that's why this is important. Also, the presence of these buildings on the street is totally different when they're elevated. I know they create some problems because most people today want to do slab and grade instead of pure and being, but there is a way to do, I mean, modern pure and being, if you want to call it that way, with a, you know, and I don't want to go into techniques, but anyway. So, I think that's one of the main reasons for having them elevated. I've seen developments that are both elevated and non-elevated, and the character of the street is very different.
It does create a different feel.
So, what I got from what he just said is, the way it's currently written is it's intended, every residence has to have a three foot.
I don't know if we've calibrated that to that level. That is a policy decision that we can do.
Commercial areas cannot have because they have to be ADA accessible.
Right. Marshall, you actually want at...
I know, but we're saying residential, so, and we don't have to debate it tonight. Very much interested in your expert opinion and we can have a policy discussion, but we need to know where we're talking about that so we know what we're agreeing to, in my opinion.
Absolutely. And so, what we've done, we've come up with a series of street types that we will be introducing. We had a conversation today from the participants and amongst our groups. We may not need this many street types. There may be street types in here that can go away. We wanted to make sure that there were adequate street types just in case. So, avenues, 100-foot avenue, it includes the lanes, on-street parking, the drive aisles. A median, the median could be used for stormwater management, so you can actually be, help with flooding. It also could count against the developers' stormwater improvements, so they can actually sheet flow into these channels and not have to detain on-site. You allow the plant material to filter the pollutants, and then you've got green streets is essentially what it is.
Matt, talk about avenue and boulevard in connection to, you have a very specific application in mind so that that is not going to be something we build everywhere.
So, avenues are intended to be short distances, taking you from a very formal environment to a place. It could be a church or some type of civic space, city hall. It's where you have a short road distance that arrives somewhere. It may be your formal houses located along the avenue, but it is not a street section you would want to use everywhere. The cost to build avenues would be extremely expensive. The cost to maintain would be expensive. There are also, they require a large right-of-way dedication as well to, in order to accomplish that. And then we have boulevards is another section that we're introducing. And boulevards are for longer streets. They're throughways. They're intended to travel long distances and to provide connections from neighborhoods or from place to place. And that was the intent with the boulevards. Then we introduced a boardwalk street. And we're going to have one more boardwalk drawing, which we haven't done, that staff asked us to do, to where you may not have it as a street at all and the parking is located on the opposite side, and it's a full boardwalk that would have a access to the river front, you know? And so, we're writing one more street section that would have a, not a street on this side, but a street on the backside of the building. So, it would almost function like an alley, but it would provide businesses the opportunity to front a boardwalk without having street frontage. So, really cool concept. It could, you can visualize it, I mean, right down by the flood plain or the areas outside of, the opposite side of 71, I'm sorry, of the Colorado River in 150. So, anyhow, that's another section. Commercial avenues are being introduced. And then your commercial street. We were working with the fire department today and they're like, well, this is what we have. And we were like, yes, sir, this is what you have. This is your commercial street that you can house within a 55-foot right-of-way. One thing that is different, though, is that we projected the sidewalks out a little bit further than what you have in the downtown area and narrowed up the lanes just a bit. And so, we've been talking with them about how this would work as well. So, we wanted to introduce those street types to you. Those are extremely important. Any questions on street types or the relationship to building the street?
So, please know that on the 23rd, we're going to get into this in great detail. This is kind of an introduction so that y'all know where we're going. My comment to you is this, you will find that there are no widths, and that's intentional. The policy decision here is not whether you want 55, 65, or 75 feet of right-of-way. If we get into that level of discussion, I think we've missed the point. The whole point of walkability is how you feel. How comfortable are you to get out and take a walk? And if we do this right, you'll walk farther than a quarter of a mile and not realize you've walked farther than a quarter of a mile. And so, the policy discussion is how the public realm interacts with the private realm. How you want that relationship with the community to occur on your porch, your sidewalk. Last night, we debated streetlights and we had a conversation about, do you want the streetlight to be on the street or do you want it to be between the street and the sidewalk, or do you want it to be on the opposite side of the sidewalk so it lights nothing but the sidewalk? And y'all made the decision to put it down between the sidewalk and the street, so not only did it light the street, but it lighted the sidewalk. That is a policy decision about feel. Because when we get into numbers, the arbitrary, I don't know what to do with 55 feet because I don't know how big that is. But depending on what you do in it, I can, I can interact with it. I can then tell you how I feel about it. So, what we are striving for is for us to have policy conversations from you about what would you be doing in this neighborhood, either as a walker or the homeowner in acting, interacting with your public space, or as an automobile driving. And that's the input on the 23rd we really need to get back from you and not necessarily get hung up on the numbers. That's the engineer's job and we'll figure out how to make what you want work, but I'm more interested in how you want it to feel and interact with the public than whether it's 55, 65, or 75 feet. So, know that you don't have that information and it's by design because that's the wrong policy conversation.
All right. Next, we'll go into the front, the public frontage plan requirements. And so, with the public frontage plan submittal, you would submit the type of drainage facility that you were proposing, the width and type of walkways you're proposing, the width and design of the furnishing zone, that's where your trashcans go, where your benches go, where your sign or overhead would go, your planting technique, species, spacing of trees. So, that would be your proposal of, I'm doing street trees every 30 feet and a, you know, 30 feet on center to have a formal environment, or I'm doing a naturalistic type of environment. Your public infrastructure would be submitted, how, the dimensions of your pipes, width of your pavement depths, all of the public infrastructure requirements, including public lighting placement type and distance between public lighting as well as the furniture. Lighting, I meant to swap this out, this is actually going to be fixtures. So, this, this section will actually have the different fixture types. So this section will actually have the different fixture types that would be allowed within the different place types, and we would like to have input in the design elements of how those get integrated. This slide actually shows the numerical standards, how foot candles...
So let me reframe this chart based on our conversation last night. We were very clear that you wanted, in most cases, light that would fade in and out, but never go dark. And so we will go back and redesign these standards with that in mind. The exception to that was what you deemed a corridor, and we have to determine based on the street designs where the corridors are going to be, where you would light them solidly. What I think changes is the fixture that may be lighting that by place type, and where those would be. So while we had lumens and things like that on this chart, all of that is not necessary based on the policy recommendation that you made last night. We've not had a chance to adapt to this. So what you'll get back will be the types of fixtures by district, and how we're going to determine what is better lit than other sections that are going to be better lit than they currently are. If that makes sense.
Yes, that does make sense, but we haven't discussed the lumens, but we haven't discussed the height of the fixtures. We definitely have to take that into consideration.
Yes, sir, and so that's, that's where we have to work through based on the conversation you gave us last night. Trey and I will argue with this team over here, because they may like something because it looks nice, and I'm going to tell you, it ain't fiscally sustainable because it's not high enough to give me enough lumens. We've not had that conversation, because y'all just made that decision last night. That's what we're saying, is this chart, when it comes back to you, we have to take what y'all are saying and get real with it. And we've just not been able to do that.
And I would remind you that we talked about having trails as having a lighting standard as well, and that's not shown on this chart.
No, and it will be a different lighting standard, which is one of the things, yes, ma'am, we have to add.
I really did like our, last night, the idea of a corridor, the idea of the fading in and out, and the idea of something on the trail.
And we talked about this, that this morning, that in those instances, we have to define the corridor. And I talked to them about, y'all suggested that we have some kind of counter of the walkers, because that really is the point. And so we're going to have to figure out how to not arbitrarily and capriciously mandate something, but based on the regulating plan, you give, what are the drivers that are likely to be the corridors that are likely to need to be lit?
Well, and to your point, and y'all will figure this out, but maybe the part of the in and out is every other side of the street, and then if it becomes a corridor, you're putting in, but the pattern's set, and then you get what you want.
Exactly.
So that you're a part, how you can think in advance, so you're not, well, crap, now we got to take everything out and redo.
Bingo.
That's what I would be looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
And in the previous material that you gave us, you gave us this really cool little chart about ambient light levels, which is great, and I don't care if you include it or you don't include it, but if you include it, it defines light levels that are then not mentioned in your light standards.
Yes, ma'am.
So either use the definitions or scrap the page, because it gets confusing.
We are going to start over based on what y'all told us last night.
But this is none, very low-low, and what was in the packet is low ambient lighting, medium ambient, and so just get all your scenarios together.
Yes, ma'am.
The next section is, it's one of the final sections, is the private realm. This is the private development standards. And in section six, it will have a process, the lot occupation, that is where the building takes up the lot, where it fits on the lot, how much percentage it would take up on the lot, and building types, building placement, ICC building separation, which instead of setbacks, general terms you'd hear, we're using the ICC code for building separation. Private frontage plan, and then your parking locations. For your site and building plan approval, you would need a site plan area. It would show your lot lines and where that's going, show your building placed on the lot. It would show the amount of the lot the building is taking up on the frontage, how it interacts with the frontage, as well as the setbacks, so we're going to change that to the building separations, as well as the private frontage, the building height and refrigeration for the building, as well as parking landscaping and signage. Those would be the elements that you would submit in your, in your site and building plans for approval. It would be stories. In the code, it says building height, and it's measured in stories. So building height is measured in stories.
And if I remember correctly, it excludes attic?
That's correct.
Okay. So that means no one would be. I want to think about, so, I've got this attic space, and I'm going to use it, and now you've got three stories.
It could be a code enforcement. That's what, it would not be something that, you would allow attics, but it was not intended for use of an attic, is the way that it's currently written. So if we'd like to add that as a...
And I'm not saying I care, I'm just trying to figure out, because if it's intended to be, finish off something architecturally, and then it becomes, somebody's hanging out the window, and now it's really a third story, and it's, that changes the feel of walking down the street.
I prefer to define this, but the important thing of the attic is that it creates maybe a half-story on top of two stories. You can have dormers and other, whatever you want to call them, because they create a greater visual interest and a greater form of richness or intraditional nature, if you can put it this way.
Well, and I would think that just the way to solve that is to just allow attics that can be built out. I mean, you have stories, and you have attics. I mean, I don't, I think that's just part of the deal. It's not that you intend the attic to be a story. It's not. It's an attic, so.
I think that has a lot to do with it. My house is like that.
Yeah, my house is like that.
It cannot be finished out, because it's not structurally, but space-wise, it'd be another story. So, you know, I think what's put into it would define that, wouldn't it? I mean, the design of it.
Well, in the international codes and the building standards, it's built to addresses that, because your attics are not built to be structurally sound, to be floors.
That's where I'm going.
Yes, sir.
And this is the lot occupation. So again, I started to introduce the layers of lots and why that would be important. So this is your frontage line. This is the line where the property line meets the public right-of-way. The first layer of the lot is where you determine whether your porch or whatever, your interaction with the public space from the private space gets determined. Layer two is where the principal, this is actually detrimental, no, 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 sorry, I went in the wrong direction. Okay, this is better. You'll notice that the principal structure starts at the second layer of the lot. In the current draft, it states that parking must be located in the second layer of the lot for every place type. That's the current recommendation for that.
And that's important, because last night, y'all were very clear, you didn't want parking in the front yard. Well, this is how you make sure parking doesn't happen in the front yard, because in this instance, the front yard is the first layer, the second layer is behind the front yard. So that's how you would regulate in this instance, to make sure we're not parking in the front yard.
And the third layer is the backyard, and what happens in the backyard stays in the backyard. We're just saying, get out of people's backyards. It's just the backyard.
It's a chicken.
I'm sorry? Unless it's a chicken?
Keep moving, Matt.
So that's the third layer of the lot. And what we're concerned in with, in the way that the code is drafted, is the first layer of the lot is the critical piece. So again, there are no minimum lot dimensions, so the way that you would regulate that is by the occupation of the lot. So in this example, this building takes up about 40% of the width of the lot from this frontage. So this width is about 40% of that total lot. And that ensures that you get a uniform street edge with buildings that are brought to the street and that take up a certain percentage of the lot to create that walkable environment. And that's what's being, what that's being used for. Next, you have a private frontage. This is where you get to select your type, and you'll, it's a little bit difficult to read on the screen. But up here, you'll show the lot line versus the right-of-way, your private versus public frontage, and one is in plan view and one is in profile view. So you'll see the trees on the porch, the dooryard, the terrace, the stoop, the lightwell, the gallery. A gallery is when you have an awning all the way over that lands with the posts into the right-of-way. The right-of-way, those posts would have to be a minimum of two feet back from the curb line, so that people there could open their doors. There's, everything in this code is measured based off of real characteristics. There's no arbitrary numbers in here. We've landed everything based off of the existing environment. An arcade is when you have a story that finishes out over the, over the frontage. So the actual building comes out, and it forms a arcade at the ground floor, and so that's a representation of that. So they could go and pick a building type. They pick a frontage type of how it relates, and you go pull permits to build. And that's the private frontage. Here are the building plans, patterns. The first type is edge yard. That is what we use today. This would be your general five-foot side yards, 20-foot front yard, if you will. But again, you would have to ensure that the interaction between the public and private realm matches. This is designated for place type three only. So you have villa, house, duplex, apartment house, which could be a fourplex in that area.
Can you go back one or two? Go back one more. On the porch, that tree that's on the lot side, mandatory tree? Or that's an optional tree, and it just happens to be shown to have a tree on the lot, on the private side?
It's an optional tree, which is demonstrated.
Okay, I was just making sure, because it's like, if it's in the private realm, we shouldn't be mandating what's in the private realm, right?
It's just showing a tree that was placed there. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No, thank you. That's great. The next type is a side yard building, which we kind of explained already. And you can see where the building fits on the site, and also it has an accessory unit in the rear.
Okay, so my...
A quick question. So let's say you have an existing house on a lot. Could you come in and say, you know what, I want to put two accessory units in my backyard, so now my lot is a triplex, I guess? Is that going to be allowed, or is this just for you lots? Because I look at, like, Con Street, and there's a lot of really big lots, and if you can develop those to a certain extent...
We have debated this, and what we would say is, it is a policy decision as to, is it allowed? We would recommend yes. How many, in certain areas, we would say, we don't care. And what drives that is the impervious cover limit.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
And so we're not arbitrarily and capriciously deciding that you're limited to three, but if you've used your lot impervious cover for your house, you don't get an accessory structure. And so we're letting the number-one thing that we're trying to resolve in this community drive that. But those are policy discussions. In the, in the concepts of what we're bringing, there isn't a place that I think we would have a problem with an accessory structure if it didn't cause detrimental development through a drainage problem. But those are policy conversations that y'all get to have.
So I just, real quick, just want to throw this out there, because I've thought about this a lot, as far as like allowing, because that's some real affordable housing in safe neighborhoods, which I think is super important, and it brings a lot of different ages together, which I really also think is really important. But I just think something that we should consider is that that accessory unit mimics the original structure, and that way, we're not like really, you know, they don't have to look a certain way, other than it has to look like the original structure, which, if it's a ranch house, it could be a ranch house. If it's a two-story historic home, then it looks like a little historic cottage. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there, so.
Another important provision is to make sure that the accessory unit is not larger or looks more important than the main house. But we would highly recommend it, because of what Lydia said that it does. It increases what they call, this gentle density. You're actually allowing, you're creating conditions for people of different economic status to live in the same neighborhood. And that's really what we're all trying to do, and make them real neighborhood.
The next type is a rear yard building, and this is where the buildings are, come right up to the street edge, and you have a rear yard, and the services will be located in the rear. You can still have a front-access rear yard building. So they still, you can have driveways in the front of these, and it doesn't require rear-loaded. I just want to make sure, that's a term often used, is alley-loaded or rear-loaded, is not required under this. You can still have frontage off of these. But it's just the placement of the building. So the first example is a row house, and it's brought right up to the street edge with an accessory unit in the rear. The next example is an apartment building, and it shows how it relates on the lot and how it relates to the frontage. And the second would be a commercial storefront, exactly like the downtown. There may be areas where you would want to designate that they need to be alley-loaded based off of the existing context. If you don't want interruptions into the public realm with driveway cuts, like Main Street, between Chestnut and Pine, that entire block has no curb cuts, because the buildings take up the entirety of the site, which creates a very walkable environment. So there are areas where you may want that to be the case.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So just something for us to think about is, if you're building that accessory unit, and let's say that the opportunity to have your office back there, or a hair salon, or something like that, you know? And that's going to be, of course, a policy decision, and maybe it can only exist, but I'm just saying, that's going to be one of the questions that comes up. If you have an extra building on your lot, or can it be a, what is it called, when you rent your house online?
Airbnb.
Airbnb, you know what I mean? And then all of a sudden, that becomes an income opportunity for the city with taxes. So that's just something I just wanted to throw out there, because I think it's going to come up with these allowing second structures or third structures on lots.
But Matt, didn't we say at the beginning, we're not restricting uses?
That's right.
So it's a building...
So that's the answer. Okay, good.
I think it's a, if you're in place type four, and that's what you build, then that would be an allowable use. Which I love the fact that we're having that conversation. That's fantastic.
I think another, another thing to mention is that some cities are allowing actually two, but they limit the square footage. And when I say allowing two, that means they allow you to actually spend your house in the back if you need to, and then add another unit in addition to that. So that's another, I think, another opportunity to increase the density, which all counts for the public transit eventually might happen. But, you know, you need a certain number of, you gotta do this for eight, but you know, for transit for both.
And the final building type we're introducing is a courtyard. And these are where the house front goes all the way to the street edge, and you have framed courtyards inside of a side yard, if you will. And so courtyard buildings and courtyard apartments would be introduced. And right now, it's proposed that these are allowed in place type four and five. And so it's a pretty intense look and feel at the street edge, so it's a pretty bulky building. That's why it's located in those place types. But again, we, the council has the decision to calibrate those at that level. The next item that we'll be talking about, and I'm going to just introduce it and let Milosov explain it, is the pattern book. And what you see on the screen is our proposed, and it's a draft table of contents of the pattern book and how it will be approached. So it will start to introduce the history and context of why the pattern book is important. And pattern books regulate architectural, and it's the design elements that finish out the look and feel of what we're trying to accomplish throughout the code about creating quality communities and places. But it will capture the new code approach and philosophy, the geography, and the importance of the land and the development conditions. It will capture the development patterns, as well as the character districts within each of the different elements of the pattern book, place types, location and character, block structure. We've come up with several different block types that we'd like to introduce, that the development community can build, not just a standard block type with the buildings, but maybe you have a different orientation of blocks. Streets and frontage types, building types, open and public spaces, the architectural standards, architectural styles. Again, all of these could be calculated by character type, as well as landscape concepts and how the landscaping, how and why the landscaping is important with, in each of the public realms, place types, and how the streets interrelate with those standards. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Milosov.
Before Milosov does this... Before Milisov does this, I want to frame this just a little bit. A lot of the information that we've gotten yesterday and today are the very elements that Milisov needs to bring you a pattern book that is authentic Bastrop. And that will begin to happen on the 23rd of April. And there will be some pictorial choices that he'll need feedback about because it is that design element. Today, and I had never thought about it, but when we were talking about this, the post office is no longer doing house-to-house delivery. And those of us that live downtown are very spoiled to the fact our mail shows up on our front porch. Well, in the future, you're going to have to build a kiosk and build your own mini little post office. Well, if not done right and done well, that can really mess up the feel. So that becomes a design element. I hadn't even thought about how that integrates in a neighborhood because it becomes a social gathering place when people end up there in the evenings to check their mail. The thing that I want to keep saying is this. There are, there are going to be some architectural elements that y'all are going to be okay giving staff the authority to work with developers. And as long as it looks like A, B, C, and D, we have authority to move forward and y'all don't have to be involved in the process. So we're not saying with this pattern book that it can't be built-in Bastrop if it isn't in the pattern book. What we're saying is staff can approve it at a staff level if it isn't in the pattern book. So if there is some really cool, modern, something, 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 something that we've not ever thought about, that is the latest and greatest trend, then that's always an opportunity to bring to council. It's also an opportunity for the annual review, when we look at the codes and the pattern books, for planning and zoning to make a recommendation to you that says, "Look, we've had three or four developers that we've met with, all because they want this style and we don't allow it. That's a recommendation to amend the pattern book." So it's not an end-all, be-all. It's a starting point. This is, we trust staff to go and if it looks like this, feels like this, acts like this, we can have it. So I tell you that to tell you, this pattern book can be a huge, all-encompassing project if we try to get every type possible in here. That's not the objective. The objective is, what are you comfortable giving us permission to work with? Not, are we going to allow it in Bastrop or not? And so I want to preface that so as we count on Milisov to work us through this the next couple of meetings, if you're not comfortable with it, the right answer is just don't put it in the book. If they want it, they can come visit with you about it. So that, I hope, will relieve some pressure because this, there's a lot of choices that are going to be made in the pattern book.
Can I, I just want to say one thing about the mailboxes. Because I was at the post office the other day and I mentioned something about what the post, what the box has to look like and so forth. And they said, "Oh, that's a federal," you know. I just think we need to get on the front of that, is what I'm saying.
Well, a lot of communities build what they call post offices, which basically you just go to when you come from work to pick up your mail. And these can be classic falutin buildings. They can be gazebo-like, you know, all kinds of things. Well, all right. Well, Matthew and Linda pretty much covered really a lot about the pattern book. Since I will be spearheading that effort, I wanted to thank you for making the decision to do it. I think it's an important, it's an important document that probably the document that brings the development community, the city, the planners, and whoever implements the code on the same page. And it's responsible, these pattern books in history have been responsible for the appearance of these traditional community or traditional neighborhoods throughout the country. Sometimes places that are far away from each other. And the only way they were able to do the same Victorian or craftsman or classic or whatever building type was because there were some patterns. But the patterns have actually got out of favor with a lot of builders. And lately, and which was illustrated yesterday on our tour around the city, you know, within a couple of blocks, there were high-end traditional buildings, there were high-end modern buildings. And you could tell that there was a different level of thought that went into the design of these. It's not expensive material that makes something beautiful. It's the level of thought that goes into it. The details, the type of materials, the relationship between the parts of the building, and all that. So the other thing that I should mention is that the importance, the importance between the buildings and the streets. We will probably have a matrix that connects it to, in the pattern book, in the pattern book. So that each street is sort of connected to the building type and each building type is connected to the street. In other words, where they can go. We will probably treat the building types in a lot more detail, not probably, but we will treat the building types in a lot more greater detail than the code will. This would be a companion to the code and will probably repeat some of the things that are in the code, but it will be a separate document. It would be much more graphic. It would deal with a lot more details. I think we will start probably with single-family homes and maybe at least three or four different types of single-family homes that would be appropriate for different place types. Then we will probably go into the next building, or a housing type that we, let's say mansion homes or multi-unit homes, duplexes, quad duplexes. Then we'll go into the townhomes, live-work units, and then into commercial buildings. So we would basically work with everything that you see physically around you. Those are the patterns. Pattern is something that repeats itself and it appears to be a whole in some way. The other thing that we will do, when we come to this, to the details of, say, single-family homes, we would really deal with all of the aspects of it. With the roof types, roof pitches, roof materials. In commercial buildings, it was required that the building has the bottom, the middle, and the top, instead of just lifting, you know, the floor plan with no distinction between the three parts, and so on. So, let me see where this is. We generally do not really code public buildings, but we could really recommend what role they should play and what appearance they should have. And we would probably identify the types of public open space that would prevent the developers to give the leftover land that cannot be used, you know, as their credit for the required open space.
And can we get an amen to that?
Amen.
They will be typologically identifiable. There will be certain sizes specified. And, you know, they would depend on the place types of which ones would be appropriate. So I think that's about it. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
So mayor and council, that just gives you an overview. And just know, on the 23rd of April, we'll be bringing more of these types of discussions back to you.
Just one more thing. I actually plan to visit the communities around Bastrop, which I have photographed profusely in the last two or three years because I was involved with the Form Based Code. I would go to Elgin and Smithville and will contact the Historical Society here in town so we can all get on the same page as far as where we have come from and why certain things are important.
Okay. Good deal.
Next, we're going to go back to the character districts and start defining those individual characteristics.
Mayor and council, you have a packet that looks like this. And it's intended to organize the conversation. So there are a couple of things that we need to get from this. And that is, we need to verify that the definition fits the district. Get you to validate, "Yep, you like that name. No, we don't. If there's some other name you like better." These are policy decisions. So we will do that. I have a series of pictures after each one of these to begin to tell you the types of uses that are already there. Because at the end of the day, each one of these districts, we need to review the place type. And you need to share with Matt your feelings on what type of place types do you want in that district. We've made some recommendations and you can either go, "Yep, y'all got it spot-on, keep moving." Or, "What were you thinking? We're not doing that." So that's the kind of feedback that we need. So we'll start with Cattlemen's. This is Bowleson Crossing. This is the duff track that most people in town call the goat track. This takes in the old settlement area and the Rosanke track. And so a lot of that land is open. It's been cattle grazing for hundreds of years, hence why we called it the Cattlemen District. Some of the environmental or geographically sensitive things to consider are, this really at its, at its edge, which is right here, that's going to be 969. And that is an entrance into 969 from Bastrop into what is our ETJ. So that and the fact it's rural and ag are the things that we factored in. So essentially, it just pays homage to the ranching that has been a cornerstone of our economy. We envision more of the Bowleson Crossing, an F5-type density, or P5, like tornado, F5. P5 with the core district, which would be a mix of retail, restaurant, office buildings. This was an area that Milisov during the code rodeo in December actually did a rendering for that we've seen on some of the PowerPoint. If I can make this work. You can see the, the what?
That's the top button.
I want the, where's the light-up button?
It's the top button. Very top one.
So when does it go to light?
You can double-click it.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so this is the old settlement, old settlement building that you see from 71. This is the Rosanke track. If you're growing up, Old Settlement Drive, this is kind of a commercial tech, office, industrial-type field building. And you have senior housing. You also have your Bowleson Crossing, big box retail, that mirrors kind of that storefront F5 that you would see, P5, so on Main Street. In front of Lowe's, there is still a tract of land yet to be developed. And this is on Duff Lane that runs between McCoy's and Hobby Lobby. So that gives you a sense of what is currently in that district. And so at this point in time, from a density standpoint, we're seeing kind of a mix of P3, P4, P5. You could have some neighborhoods, probably more of a P4, P5. There would obviously be some nature and open areas built into that, but there isn't going to be a driver. There's not a towed habitat. There's not a watershed creek that's going to have that nature area. So if P1 is important in this area, that would be one of those things you would need to specify and cause it to happen. Because there's not going to be something out there that would drive us that we're going to be working around.
I just wanted to say something really quick. I actually spend a lot of time, and you know, what's interesting is that it's almost been allowed to develop the way that it wants to. And it's doing exactly what we want it to do. There's a tremendous amount of interaction. There's a huge diversity. There's a lot of pedestrian. There's always people out over there. And you wouldn't think about it because you'd see all this industrial, but it is, I tell you, it's, it really, it's kind of interesting that it's doing what we want it to do. So this is a really easy space to work with, for us.
And I think Councilmember Jones hit the nail on the head. And that was part of what, as I drove around really owning what was out there, I came to the same conclusion. We can build this today. Because our current zoning doesn't allow the flexibility to let this be whatever it needs to be. So I want to, now that we've kind of taken that, why am I going the wrong way? Sorry, guys. I wanted to drive this in just a minute. So the definition calls for a mix of retail, restaurant, and office buildings that incorporate residential around community agriculture, open fields, and water features that are reminiscent of the meandering streams, stock tanks, and once-serve lifestyle. So let me pause in just a minute. Let's talk about what character districts could ultimately be. We talked about building neighborhoods and not subdivisions. And so when you think about all of these areas, that becomes a neighborhood. And the way that neighborhood can get distinguished is with cattlemen-type features, windmills, splint rail fences, horseshoes and things like that that brand it to be the Cattlemans. It becomes a neighborhood where you could actually, instead of having homeowners associations, you could have neighborhood associations. You could create that sense of community around the character district. And that's what we were striving for. So the definition begins to describe how a developer may come in and incorporate the district to kind of set it apart. So with that in mind, I've said what needs to be said. I'm interested in y'all talking and discussing relative to, do you like what it's called? Do you like the definitions and place types?
One of the very first things I noticed from the picture is it's senior housing and they don't have stairs to get into there. So that needs to be an exception. It's already there. And if we're trying to have mixed use and have ages and have people be able to get in and out of it, when you show that picture, they've got a nice little front porch and there are no steps getting into that residential area.
The thing that I would say about that is, yes, ma'am, and-
I think you're going the wrong direction.
Why am I going?
There you are, bottom right.
It does have a porch, but it is back farther from the street. And so in that area, in that instance, that could be a model. Riverwood Commons is the three-story internal elevator. So to your point, there are options.
And there's not stairs to get into that.
That's right.
So we just, I understand the feel for it, but it just seems not reasonable to say, every residential house has to have three foot of stairs. When you've got senior housing, that just doesn't make any sense. But it can be an element of.
Yeah, I'm not saying-
It can be an element of, because everything is not going to be the same.
That's true. And by making it available, hopefully we'll get a developer that will see its potential and incorporate it. But a lot of people build to the minimums and if you don't make them, they won't. So as long as we understand-
And if you want to say that, make your first layer deeper or do something to make it, I'm fine with it, but we just shouldn't automatically code out something-
Right.
-that we know we have that's successful, that we want.
That's right.
Then we're doing the, that's the opposite of what we're trying to do.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so-
We're also not looking at any of this in a vacuum. We've got to look at the functionality, the practicality of it, and affordability of it in every instance. So it's, I'm glad we're talking about this so we can address those issues.
And then on the percentages, if you go to, it looks like, and it's fine, but it looks like, I don't know if you did it on this one or if you did all of them, to start with the same percentages?
This slide is consistent behind all of them. It's nothing more than a starting point because these are your choices, not ours.
So you had mentioned more P4 and P5, so it seems like those numbers, that range of those numbers should be higher.
So the way I would suggest y'all debate that is this. Realizing that this is where you have potential development to occur. There are not large numbers of tract, tracts of land available. Cattlemen's area is going to be one, the Meadows is one, and we're going to have to annex to get bigger, larger tracts of land. So these are places that you can dare to dream, what would you like to see that maybe we don't have somewhere else? Or we want more of somewhere else? So with that in mind, if you look at the percentages, what you're saying is, is that 70% of this district would be P4, P5. That would be a replica of downtown. And you would not disallow P3, P2, or P1, but it's not going to be the predominant fill or predominant output. So the easiest way to say, if you like these standards, you're going to replicate downtown again. This would be one of the places that I would say to you that we need to have the special district designation that the mayor spent some time talking about. Because this is tracts where if we're going to get- Because this is tracts where if we're going to get a large industry, we've got a large tract of land to do that. So this would be an area where we would need to talk about a special, uh, district, and it could be developed to be a more industrial-type application. Just because you've got, um, acreage available to do that that's contiguous.
So right now, you want to, I mean, do you, right now, want us to give you some direction on this, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Because I have something, I mean, if that's what you're looking for, then I think that this area is perfect for exactly what we want to do as far as coding in all of these different types and, um, right along with putting in some sort of, you know, industrial or larger tracts for employers. This, this, and then, you know, maybe coming in next to that on that goat track or whatever with these raised porches that are fourplexes, along with houses that are large that are single-family, you know, with that pond down the middle. I mean, this is perfect, the way that, that you presented this in creating another Cattlemans neighborhood. So, I mean, this is exactly what we've, we're trying to replicate. This is the perfect area to do that.
So Councilmember Ennis, let me address, you, you're not sure what I'm interested in hearing from you. Um, there, there are going to be some areas where you're not going to be interested in, um, the more intensive uses of replicating Main Street with the density. So essentially, what we're saying is, is that in the, and I'm, yes, I'm going the right way. So in this Cattlemans area, about 50% of it would replicate, um, Main Street as far as how it would feel, the density, and how that would interact with the space. So envision Main Street from Chestnut to Pine. About 40% of that would be more like the, um, the, uh, give me a P4 in town.
Let me make it, let me, let me make it easy on you. The only reason I said I didn't know what to say was because I got the evil eye from the mayor. So, um,
Oh, because it was silent. She's wanting somebody to answer, and I've talked all night, and it's like to say something.
Well, I have, and you were giving me the evil eye.
What are you thinking, I?
If, if you want me to say what I think that belongs in that area, it's P5. Because we've already got, it's mixed, it's mixed use. It already is, so.
Yeah, but that is also conducive to special districts. I'm not real certain I like the term special district. I like to call it what it is, commercial, industrial, or, or something to that effect. Employment centers, uh, something that's, that's, that's ripe for, uh, for, for some larger, uh, development. You know, I'm, I'm thinking, I hate to say this, thinking, you know, SAMs or something to that effect. I mean, that's an area that's.
Um, I, I think that, uh, the term employment center is awesome. And so we could write some codes, and so from that perspective, the Cattlemans District is a, a much more dense P5 employment center, um, type, uh, destination. And, and we're comfortable with that.
And my question from Milisov would be of the picture that you drew, is it in these percentages, or is it mostly P4 and P5?
The, uh, the picture, it, it actually does have P3, P1. It had a, a full cross-section, but, um,
Was it a cross-section to these percentages?
It probably had higher P5 than these percentages did, than, than lower.
And that means the other ones were lower?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
But the other thing I would like us to look at, too, is doing some sort of proposal to the existing development there because we talked about the parking being 70% empty or something like that, and look at sort of cozying that up a little bit so it's not just this huge sea of parking. I mean, that's something I thought that we had talked about as well.
I, I think what ends up happening is, once these codes are adopted, then it's an opportunity for us to sit down and, and, and educate the developer on the opportunity. Um, part of the, the challenge you're going to have is not all big box retail have made the transition to having an urban component. Um, some of your big box already are anticipating this type of development. They have what they call their urban store. It's a smaller profile, small, uh, much less parking because it goes in a walkable area. For those that have made the transition, they'll be fine with it. But there are going to be some retail out there that would pitch a fit of epic proportion if you dial down the parking they don't use, but they think they have to have. So what we would do is just present it to them as an opportunity that as they move forward, we would encourage them strongly to do.
If you don't mind, I'll just make one more observation. Uh, the reason we call these special districts is because they're too large to fit in the neighborhood. So they have to be given a special place. And the importance of that is that the edge condition of these districts has to be treated in relation to the surrounding neighborhoods. In other words, although it's an industrial site or employer, or whatever you want to call it, it needs to treat its edge in a way in which responds to the surrounding neighborhood.
But you can write that into it and still call it an employment center.
Sure, yes.
And, and if you do that, you've made Mike Camerlander's job, and we want him to be successful a whole lot easier.
Yes.
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 Yeah, the special district denotes something that's very generic whereas we're trying to, to create the appropriate atmosphere for the developers to come in. We're trying to set the parameters, in my mind, trying to set the parameters and let the creativity of the developer be somewhat expansive to, to provide us lessons in this so that we can continue, it's a, it's a, it's a, a living document. It's not something we're just putting.
That's right, and we can make that work.
And let the market drive it. There you go. There's your other term, Linda.
Um, okay, so cultural arts, moving right along. Um, this is an area that, um, is ninety, okay. Um, that is 95 to the east. It is, um, 71 to the south. It is Farm Street to the north, and it crosses the railroad track and picks up the Cultural Arts Center. Um, so that kind of gives you a general, uh, sense. So, um, art and cultures are the centerpiece of this district located in one of the oldest parts of the city. This district will pay homage to the rich culture of Bash Drop, providing a physical landscape to share the human experience. A sophisticated mix of theater, music, and art will blend with a mix of housing while also providing shopping and dining opportunities. Situated along two state highways, this district will be a destination for tourists and locals alike sharing that cultural experience. So currently, what you find in this district is we have a, um, movie theater. Um, we have, um, your more, um, intense commercial application, which is your tire automotive-type use. Um, in the bottom left is the new STEM and Stone, uh, restaurant being built. Uh, behind the Arts Center, we have, uh, a mobile home park. Um, we also have your traditional housing. Um, we have a church application. We have our convention center, and we have City Hall. So it is already that, um, cultural arts kind of, of space. Um, the Performing Arts Center with the school district is in that, and the cultural arts definition came directly out of the Form Base Code. Um, that is an area that was designated in the Form Base Code to be cultural arts. So, um, again, this, um, percentage here is, um, your standard, and this is one that we are very much interested in what you have to say and how you see this evolving. And Mr. Peterson, since you live here, why don't you talk in the mic and talk to us?
Well, thank you for visiting my neighborhood. This area has a lot of history, cultural, special cultural history, and it's very diverse because we have a school, we have churches, and we've got City Hall. Exhibit, uh, Convention Center across the street. So this is a very viable neighborhood for the city.
It is, and the environmentally sensitive project that we would work around is the half-in-associates project that was presented to council meetings ago where we will be expanding Gill's Branch and, and, and enhancing its capacity. And, um, uh, Paul Morales talked about that the, uh, expansion of the banks would be built into a trail, a walking system. Um, you, you might contain some of the water to have a water feature just to keep it interesting. The, uh, Councilmember Peterson's mixing that. Nope, we won't. Um, but whatever you find to be, um, uh, relevant to that, that becomes the walkable connectivity that will run, um, essentially, um, uh, lateral, uh, not lateral, but, um, north to south through the district. So with that in mind, um, uh, there are clearly, um, some neighborhoods, uh, that are here. You've got more of your civic space. Um, hopefully, one day, we'll get a hotel. Our farmers market's here. Um, Dr. Lassiter has, um, uh, built his office and paid homage to the,
Lawson.
Lawson, I'm sorry. Um, has paid homage to the, the railroad. So there are a lot of unique elements that could make this district really a, a cool, cool hip place.
Well, and then the, uh, the, the thing is, is this walking trail that's going to be connecting Bash Drop to the State Park, which is huge. This, to me, is one of the biggest things that, that we're doing. Really, really important, which brings the point that we've, we've got to figure out how to get people over 95, which is a pretty big deal, safely, or across it, you know? I mean, maybe not over it, but across it. So this is going to become something we really have to think about. And then, once we get them to the end of that trail, getting them into the park, you know, those are two things that we have to.
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, the one thing that I would say to, to you that I failed to say is this really is an entrance point, um, into, um, uh, Bash Drop. When you come in off the hill off of 21, this becomes an entrance. And the Cultural Arts District, um, is an anchor, uh, to downtown just like the historic elements of downtown are the other anchor. So, um, which, which is your pleasure?
Well, manager, just one thing we did forget is Core Community Center and the City Park.
Yes, sir.
Is also the neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
It seems like one of the things, and this is, this is weird, and I know it, you're, we're trying to set policy. We've got a million of these to go through, but it seems to me there are major portions of this that are already defined.
Yes, ma'am.
And Gill's Branch, and knowing what the, what, what that wider trail's going to be, well, there's no point in setting it at 5% if when you take that floodplain through it, it's 7%. So there's, and we don't know what those numbers are. It's very likely that the convention center's not going to suddenly turn into single-family housing, as is City Hall, so, and, and P1 through P5, where does civic centers fit into? Is that considered P5, or is that another special district?
No, no, civic space has its own designation, so civic spaces are, are their own thing.
So it's play, P1 through P5, special districts and civic spaces?
Essentially, yes. Civic spaces have their own parameters.
So then where do civic spaces fit into the percentages?
It, it's not calculated into the percentage. It's its own special place. It does not factor into the percentage.
So all, what he just says makes it really hard for me to tell you what, make a recommendation for P1 through P5 because I don't know, if you take out the civic space and you take out the other space, you, you, you know, there's a defined Gill's Branch, that drainage area.
And, and, and so we're going to get to a parcel level through all of this, but we've got to have some direction. So if you're not com- comfortable giving the percentages, are you comfortable seeing more P5 than we got out there? Or you don't want P5? You really want it limited at P4? Um, uh, we've got to have some direction.
I'd like to say that I wish that we could assign this P4, but in P4, it says, "Commercial and office uses are allowed in this district only in house form structures." Well, it's already existing that they're not house form businesses or not in house form structures. So how do we get around that?
Okay, so that's awesome feedback. That's what we need to hear. So we have already established that we've got some commercial applications that don't fit in housing. So that becomes one of those things in this area we need to acknowledge because by the time we got through listing the things, we can all agree that this is not predominant residential. But by the time you look at the parks, the open space, the City Hall, the Convention Center, the theater, and, and the business that automatically lines 95, it is not predominantly residential. We have a residential component. We certainly want to protect that, but that's not the driver of this area. So, um, recognizing, so let me say this about that. One of the things that we're going to have to do in August in order to meet the legal requirements of, um, this process is at a parcel level, we're going to have to establish the zoning requirements. And zoning in infield is going to come at two levels. One is the character district, and the second is the place type. So stand at the corner of Hazel and Walnut. Um, two, the northeast and southeast corners are vacant. On the northwest corner is the church, and on the southeast or southwest corner, there's a house. So we walked down there and stood and said, what would we make these parcels from an infield standpoint? And in those instances, it's primarily residential. So at a lot level, we would say the zoning needs to be P3 because the buildings that are already there have set the tone for that block, and it's residential. So every lot in town is going to have to be assigned a zoning district and a place type.
You said zoning. Do you mean character district?
Character district and place type because that becomes the zoning on an infield situation. Each one in an infield situation. Now, in Cattlemans area, there is, um, greater than the two and a half, three and a half acres, 3.2, so it will get only the character zone. And the second aspect of that zoning will come from the regulating plan where it is provided with the percentages of P5, P4, P3 at that block level.
Can we, um, modify the districts, cultural districts?
Sure.
Because I'm saying, what I'm thinking, and you may disagree with me or may, may not, uh, Councilman Peterson's area seems like it would be more in downtown in, in the old section of town than it would be in a cultural arts district.
Except for, um, Martin Luther King is the first entrance into the cultural arts off of 71. If not for that, we would have agreed with you.
But that is essentially a residential area with churches and a school in it. It's not.
But it's high traffic.
Well, why does have traffic have anything to do with it?
Well, that's part of what we factor in with the road and the usage. And if you want it in downtown, that's fine. I'm explaining to you why we put it in cultural arts. That, Martin Luther King culminates at the cultural arts, I mean, at the civic center. So as you come in, it's an entrance into the cultural arts because as you cross 95, the first entrance into downtown is Martin Luther King. That culminates right out there. So that was the reason we put it in the cultural arts because it's a pretty significant entrance point into downtown.
Just like Water Street is. Just like Water Street is.
The boundaries of the character districts are somewhat arbitrary in nature. We had to set some sort of criteria on that. Would it not be easier for each one of these areas to provide some exceptions that may or may not be allowable in those areas? For example, in the Cattlemen's district, we're talking about big employment centers. I threw out the example of Sam's. Sam's would not fit, a big box store would not fit into the cultural...
That's right.
District. So, we can define the parameters of this any way we need to, but there's always going to be an exception to the rule, and I'd rather deal with the exception than modify the rule on a routine basis.
Which is exactly the point of the character districts, yes. So, what I would say to you, Councilmember Ennis, if the issue is you want to keep it residential, it doesn't have to be in downtown to do that. You just need to tell us that we want Martin Luther King to stay residential, and it will not be anything other than P3. And you just say that, and we note that in the cultural arts, that you can have a variety of mixed use, but for Martin Luther King, Hazel, Walnut Street, those areas, the density will not be anything more than P3. And you can do that at that granular level.
Well, that's more up to Councilman Peterson, since he lives smack dab in the middle of that area. What do you think, sir?
Like our manager quoted earlier, we do have some infill areas that's going to have to be addressed, in that area along Walnut and Hazel. And we also have a store on Hazel and Loop 150.
Yes.
Multiple stores, if you will. And this category would fit in either three or four, for as I'm concerned, because we...
Three or four.
Three or four. So, we have to be flexible in that area.
Because I think we have to allow the people in that, because I'll tell you, one of the things that's happening with all this is people that have existed in these neighborhoods a long time are afraid they're going to get pushed out. And this is a big problem. You know, they're afraid that by us just kind of opening all this up, that they're going to be, you know, pushed out. And I think it's, we've got to be able to some kind of way, not necessarily preserves, not the right word, but give people some sort of feeling of place that this isn't just...
That's exactly why, when I said we are going to go at a parcel level, we need to let what's there dictate what's coming. Because what the neighborhood wants is predictability, that I'm going to wake up, and tomorrow, I'm going to find what I'm living in next door to me. And those are the things that, at that granular level, we will set. So, one of the things that I've said to staff is, and this is certainly a policy decision long-term, but as we mediate this, envision where you are in August, and we've gone through this exercise, and so September 1st comes along, and you get a letter as a homeowner that says we're rezoning your property. Here's what that looks like. There's going to be multiple opportunities for you to come and visit with staff, and work through and share your concerns. And so, if we've got a situation where we've decided it's P4, and the neighbors really want it to be 3, I don't think y'all are going to make it P4 if they want it P3, if we've got a particular parcel. I think y'all are going to err on the side of the neighbors. That would be one of those that we would circle and put down, and just do a friendly amendment to you that says we've heard from them, and there isn't a compelling reason not to just make them satisfied. Because we're not doing this to disturb the peace of mind of our citizens, we're doing this to be fiscally sustainable. And so, those would be the ways that we could make that peace of mind happen and bring it forth and say, "We said this, they would like this, and there are an argument, reasons why not, so we're going to suggest to you that we are." Or, if there is a compelling driver here, then that's something that y'all debate and take that into consideration. So that's where I'm saying to you, we're going to listen and be respectful of the people that are there. We're not intending to cram this down their throat. There will be a process when they get that letter and they're concerned, we're going to hear them, and we will work through that so that y'all don't rubber stamp something and then only wake up tomorrow to realize that nobody told us there were 16 people that didn't like that. Well, yeah, we heard it, and we fixed it, or here's why we can't fix it, it's a policy decision.
And not only the input from the neighbors, we'll have to consider too, that part of MLK is in a floodplain.
Yes, sir, and there are, and we saw this from Hafen Associates, that there are a couple of tracts that are in the floodplain that will be a part of Gil's Branch expansion. And so, some of the area on MLK is not going to be developable, because that's where Gil's Branch is going to go, so that the people that currently live there can do so with peace of mind.
So, I'm sorry. So I do think that that area is, and then there's also sports fields, which are part of the old football field, which we, you know, have talked about sort of behind the scenes doing something with, as far as historically marking that. It would still be sports fields, but the other thing is, this is part of our message. And this is what's really important, that we get our message out. And there can't be any more, you know, "Oh, I dropped the ball, no more." This is part of the message, and that is that these people, and this is a really unique neighborhood because of the Kerr Center, and these historic churches, and so forth. So, I think that this is going to be a little bit, there's going to be more time spent on how to make this feel, and look, and be, and develop, and the whole expansion of Gil's Branch is going to have a huge impact on that, huge. And I think that this is something we've got to make really clear, just almost like what we did when that developed, that commercial property was going to go over there in the neighborhood, and it got everybody. Well, you know what we did? We had a lot of meetings, and we gave the neighborhood a voice. And it might be that this is something that we need to do in that specific neighborhood, where we don't just come in and send a letter and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing." We set up meetings with that neighborhood, so they know that they're being heard, and we can specifically hear, because it's so unique.
Well, and we are certainly happy to do that. I would think that there's going to be some citizens in town that would tell you there's some other unique areas. So what we are attempting to do in the process is to have some meetings established as a part of the review process, where they will be invited. We're going to have the maps, they're going to come in, and we'll sit with them individually, we're going to make appointments with them, so...
So that part...
That's what I'm trying to communicate, yes, ma'am. So what I hear in the cultural...
Hang on, right now.
Go ahead, Drew. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand what you're looking for. Let's say this cultural arts area, you gave us this, you know, this percentage of V1 or P1. So you're wanting us to come back to you and say, "Okay, in the cultural arts district, we want about 60% of it to be neighborhoods, maybe 15 at tops at P5." Is that what you're asking us for, Esther?
If that's how you want to give it to me, or just like Councilmember Peterson did and said, "If we got a neighborhood, we're going to keep it a neighborhood," so the areas of Martin Luther King, Hazel, Walnut need to stay P3, and the rest of it is already kind of civic, and we'll evaluate that at a P4. That's what I heard from him, so I don't need a percentage, because to the mayor's point, we've got some other things that are going to drive that. So that's great feedback.
Right, and I'm just trying to figure out, before we go the next one, what answer can I give you, and how you want to get your answer? That's what I'm trying to ask.
So, let's be specific to answer that. There are some infill lots that are in residential neighborhoods, I think we can all agree, need to stay residential. So that's a P3 designation. There are some tracts of land that are available, whether on Martin Luther King or north of Farm Street, between Farm and Chambers, that potentially have to develop, but are not necessarily right next door to something that's developed. And let me say it this way. On Hazel and Walnut, you've got specific individual parcels of land. So, you're going to build a house. And so, we can say P3 works there. There are tracts of land that are eligible for development, because they are 5, 10, 15, 20-acre parcels of land. So, in those areas where there's nothing there that sets the parameter, Councilmember Peterson has suggested he would be comfortable with an intensity of P4, not necessarily P5.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't answer the question you're asking.
And I'm getting too, that on the percentages, we're just looking at numbers that...
Right, I was just trying to figure out how to answer the question.
They're in doubt.
Okay, well, this is what I want to say, because I'll tell you what I don't like that's happening, and that is that we say, "Oh, well, that's a cultural district, so that's not in there. Oh, that's a special district, so that's not in there." So, and I'm just going to be real clear, I'm getting texts from citizens as we're talking, and so not all these ideas are mine, I'm representing other people's ideas as well. But this is a really good point. Make a P6 and a P7 so that the percentages make sense, because I think that's a hanging point here. It's just like, okay, well, how do these numbers add up if we're just automatically going to take huge portions of this and not even include it in what we want it to look like?
And Councilmember Jones, I don't want you to get hung up on percentages. Because to the mayor's point, what we've not done is tell you what's already there. So, all this is as a reminder of what downtown looks like. That's always been our center of authentic Bastrop. So when you begin to subtract out what's there, these percentages don't work in the cultural arts district, and we didn't do it by each district. So, aren't giving percentages here, because it's very infill. So the direction that we've gotten this evening has been most helpful. The residential areas that are residential need to stay residential. The areas that are not in the floodplain, that are not going to be a part of the Gil's Branch, that are available for development, and there are very few of them, y'all would entertain a P4. All we're doing is getting feedback. You're not voting tonight, you're not making any decisions other than giving us some direction, so we know what to do and bring this back to you. There will be opportunities for the citizens to come and participate, and say, "We got that right." Nope, you didn't get that right, and here's what we think that looks like.
Mayor Protim's going to call me Captain Obvious, but it, once you have a place type, it tells you what kind of street type you're going to have. That is the entrance off of 71. And the worst thing we can do is say, "We want it to be residential, we put in a little bitty street, and then we tried, we crammed 71 traffic through that little bitty street," and people say, "Did you not know 71 was coming through?" So if we're going to, we've got to have, that's why traffic matters. And so, we have to have the tough discussion of, what is the street that you're going to allow? And if that's the street that you want, are you going to allow traffic off of 71? Or are you not going to allow traffic off of 71? That's a part of it that I didn't hear us talk about. At one point, we put MLK on the road plan, because it was going to become a major entrance into the city and go straight to the Convention Center, and people are going to do the, you take this exit, you go down, you turn right on MLK, the City Hall's on your left, and the Convention Center there. That destroys what you're currently living with. So, if that's not what we're going to do, then we shouldn't be building Highway 71 and shooting it down MLK. And I haven't heard us have that conversation, and it's 9:30, and we have 15 more districts to go through, so maybe it's not tonight, but in my opinion, that's the most important discussion to have in this district.
I think that's where I was coming from, too, is exactly what the mayor said, is are we, we're calling it this cultural district where it seems like we're cramming a lot into this designation? Was my gut reaction to it.
Okay, I don't want there to be any cramming. So if you're not satisfied with what it is, help us fix it, so that's not the feeling or the outcome.
But it's not even about cramming, it's already there.
What I'm saying is, we're calling it a cultural district, and we're forcing the residential district into the same area that the movie theater is...
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying.
...and the Convention Center is. And then we're saying that Martin Luther King is supposed to be a major entrance, which we've already designated, like the mayor said, and do we need to step back from that and take another look at it?
Can we un-designate it?
We have the transportation plan, so that it's not a major entrance into town, and it's 95 and Chestnut is the major entrance into town. I mean, that's diverting a lot of traffic through Councilman Peterson's neighborhood, and...
So, that probably is a separate item that we'll bring to you at a work session in the real near future, like probably on the 23rd of April. Because that is a discussion that has profound impact one way or the other. One of the things I will tell you is, we don't control 95, we don't control 71, and we don't control Chestnut. So I don't know how much devoting we get. But that's a journey for y'all to set policy, and that gives staff direction to go have whatever conversation that you wish to have with Willie and Diana. But the unique perspective we work here is, not every street in this town is under our domain. So, we sometimes gets to deal with the hand we got dealt. But we will put that conversation on the 23rd and have that, so we can move on, because I can tell that's an important conversation.
Yes, it is an important conversation, because some people have not read their GPSs, and it still puts them on MLK to get over to 95, and it happens every day. So, as long as we address that particular issue, and not only on MLK, there are other streets that pick up a lot of traffic from 71 to 95, that takes the intersection out, but people are going to come right through town. And it happens every day. So, that's, like you said, that's something we're going to have to look at at a later date.
Okay.
To the mayor's point, could we, could we come back next Tuesday and finish these? We're approaching, what, 10 hours of work on all of this in a little bit over 24 hours, and I think our brains are fried, and I don't know. If nobody else agrees with me, that's fine, but...
Well, can we hit some high points that'll help you? Can you...
We need thoughtful discussion, so if we can't get it this evening, and y'all are willing to come back next Tuesday, then we'll come back next Tuesday. We can't go forward in the code until we get policy direction. These are not decisions for us to make, and the feedback we've gotten in the two districts is invaluable. And this is exactly what we need to come back.
So I'd like to make the suggestion, and I totally understand why you started with the historic downtown Bastrop percentages, but we, and they're, you know, some of these districts are going to be way easier, we've done a couple of hard ones, but when there's major existing things, and to Deborah's point, well, know that it's a civic district. Well, know it's a, we've got to know either they're included in the percentages, or they're not included in the percentages, and if we could get some sort of a representation of what's already existing, and oh, by the way, there's only 4% that's infill, or in this district, there's 20% that's infill.
We could...
We could make the conversation easier, because I appreciate that y'all are trying to not, you know, I appreciate the approach that you had, but if it's a district that's 75% existing, and it's already mostly P2 and P3, and there's only 3% open for discussion, we're having 30 minutes discussions that really aren't helping y'all any.
Well, they...
But we can have, and so instead of on the percentages, we talk about the special things in a particular district. These are the things we don't want to allow, these are the things that we want to make exceptions.
Well, to your point, you're being very helpful, because none of this happens in a vacuum.
Right.
So what we've uncovered is, MLK, from a transportation standpoint, is more important than the character district. Well, if we don't have these conversations, we won't find those little nuggets. What I do want to do is find that nugget on September 2nd.
Yep, I got you.
When I would have liked to have known it on April 10th. So, this conversation, even though it looks like it's sausage making and is not productive, is the best information y'all can give us, because it's the randomness of, "Well, you didn't think about that." Thank you, now we are.
Right.
That is very helpful.
And I think Councilmember Rogers, bless her heart, has asked three times, "What's the question you're asking me?" So I think if we look at each district and say, "This much exists, this is what's currently there, this is how much percentage is infill," then we can have a discussion of, you know, it may be mostly P3 now, but it sure seems like that's begging to be P4, why don't we allow a higher range? But if we know what's there, and what's available for infill, I think we can have a more productive conversation, and then hone in on, "Hey, that's MLK, hey, that's Gil's Branch, hey, that's toad habitat," or whatever, and have it more specific. Toad Habitat, or whatever, and, and have it more specific to the district.
So, what we can do-
Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. We can do a translation of your zoning into the place types, translate your existing zoning, existing environment into the place types, run a percentage, bring that back to you and say, here's the existing percentage based on your zoning and the place types. Yeah, and run an infill map, and a vacant land map.
Would y'all be willing to come back next Tuesday, more importantly, y'all available?
I need to check.
Um, mayor, mayor, can we take a bio break and give us time to regroup just a minute?
Next Tuesday, we'll be in candidates forum.
I'm sorry?
Candidates forum, this later today, right here.
Yes, the candidate forum. Okay. Let us regroup and get some calendars I didn't bring-
And the other thing I would suggest, because a couple, a couple people have jobs, but maybe, maybe we do, we're going to do an hour at lunch and do these three districts, and here's the information, and we're going to do, you know, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday 9, and it doesn't have to be from 6 to 9, so maybe that there's-
We're just on a timetable on March 9?
No, I, I'm saying, so maybe it can be two lunches and two evenings, and we get it knocked out.
Gotcha, okay.
This doesn't always have to be 9.
Gotcha.
And I don't mind moving ahead, but I just know that when we get, as tired as we are, all of us are, everybody in this room, I think, we don't make the best decisions.
And you accuse me of giving you an evil eye, and that was not, that hurt my feelings. So, it is 9:35, and we're going to take a quick recess, come back, and kind of regroup.
Yes.
And, it'll be short, if we can get everybody to sit down.
No, no.
So, city secretary, it's 9:43, and we are back in session. And the first thing, wait, Matt, don't leave, the first thing that we're going to clarify is he is not Dr. Lassiter, he is not Dr. Lawson, he is Dr. Matt Lassen. And he's an excellent dentist, let's give him a round of applause.
He left.
And he left. Okay, so, the council, the city manager and I, everybody's acknowledging, this is a, drinking from a fire hose doesn't even begin to name it. And as painful as the last hour was, we've given them a lot of good information, we've come up with a date that we think will work, and I've, we've kind of talked about, they're going to bring us, bring it back in a slightly different form, where they're going to say, in this district, an example would be, it is currently P2, P3, P4, there are four acres of infill. Are you okay with it being any one of those, or do you prefer that it's one or the other? That, and then you can, then Councilmember Rogers will know how to say, I don't think it should be P2, I think what's left should be P4, something like that. That will also give them a feel, and give our citizens a feel for, what I heard was, what I'm living in now is what I'm going to live in later, and is what I can expect to be built next door to me. And there can be some assurity of where there's change and where there's not change. So, I would encourage you, and I know you all will, spend a little bit of time with the districts, and spend a little bit of time looking at it, and Matt, if there is any way that, of the new information as far as what's current, and Matt, it may be the Matts, Matt Jones may be helping that as well. If you can send us an Excel sheet that says, here's the districts, and here's, here's what's already there, some-
We will update the PowerPoint, but I will tell you, you're not going to get much time, because that is a voluminous amount of work-
A lot of work.
-on top of already what we've got, and so, we are living in the moment.
And I think that's fine, if we know what we're going to get when we get here, it'll be much, much easier to have the conversation.
So, if y'all would be satisfied with that, I can get it done.
Yes.
That would be helpful.
And so, so, what I would ask council to do, which is no work for staff at all, is spend some time going through the districts, and if there is like, wow, isn't that Gill's Branch? Isn't, if there's something special in your mind about the district, make yourself some notes, because that's the main thing that they're looking for, and then they're going to give us some better, not better, that sounds like what you gave us wasn't good, more detailed information, so we can give you more specific feedback. But, in general, the other thing that we would like to see addressed, and I know clearly Milosov wants it to be, remain special district, but the employment center, a civic, we didn't talk about how to handle churches, if there can just sort of be a general, because otherwise, it looks like it's P1 through P5, and that's all we can have in the city of Bastrop going forward. And, and, and that's not the, the plan, so we need to, we really do want employment centers, we really are going to have some areas that aren't specifically defined in P1 through P4. So, if we can spend some time with what they have given us, we can give them some time to come up with a little bit more information. The proposed date is next Wednesday?
Yes, starting at 4.
Cool.
Monday night is BDC, Tuesday night is the, the-
Candidate forum.
Candidate forum. I already have plans, and Friday we're closed.
Friday's Good Friday.
So, we, we really by defect, though, only have Wednesday.
We can get back together Wednesday at 4. We would really be trying to, in two and a half, three hours, knock out- Well, you're, you'll have an opportunity, you, you can send notes ahead of time, you'll, it'll be recorded. Yes, sure, yes. That's fine. And it won't be the last conversation.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
But, it's an important conversation, because we're going to be making some decisions from this that we're going to be building on.
Absolutely, as long as Councilmember Rogers don't come back warning, 70% in P5, we'll be okay.
All right, city manager, do you need anything else? You'll add a, have city secretary thing sitting behind me, have somebody add that to our council calendar so that we're all aware of that. But, it's 4 o'clock next Wednesday, and it, and on drainage, is that, that was the third item, is there anything we need to discuss? I, what I heard from everybody was with the water quality out of it, with the two-foot freeboard, they were in general, I didn't hear major complaints.
We have some tweaking, we're going to put an ordinance on the 23rd agenda, and we will talk about it then. What we got was validation today, we're not doing anything off the chart that people are going to scream at. Some of them don't like it, but it's what's best for, you know, our, our citizens. So, we anticipated and got what we were looking for today. So, any of the changes will be talked about in the presentation, and can easily be tweaked if you want different language in the ordinance.
Okay, and the engineers that I spoke with, I told them, it was my understanding that the ordinance would be a part of the packet-
It will be.
-that would be posted on Thursday, and I wished them all Happy Easter, and encouraged them to speak up, although it was only the first reading of the ordinance, it would be important to get feedback, either by email to council members, or to come to and speak at them.
And we had drafts today, and there were folks sitting in the back reading it.
Yes, and they've taken those drafts, they're going to get together as a group, and send us their comments.
Perfect, and I, so, I think we've been as transparent as we can about that, and that, so drainage will be first reading of the ordinance on, on the meeting on the 23rd. Is there anything else? Matt Jones, you're awesome, is there anything else you want to share with us?
Well, I prepared about a 10 to 15 minute PowerPoint, but we can forego that.
City attorney? Looks like you're spending the night in Bastrop, don't it?
I just want to confirm you're right, Matt Jones is awesome.
All right, thank you guys, staff, thank you so much, Matt, and your staff, thank you, council, there's nobody else I would spend this amount of hours with in a 24-hour period. It is 9:50, and we are-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, 9:50, and we're adjourned.